What's that expression? The silence is deafening? Well, I've got six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started with our meeting. Welcome fellow council members and staff and attendees to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the Former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly give us a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
She's just logging in.
Okay, I'll move forward with Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, if you would all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I would like to dissolve off a moment of silence with all the turbulence going on these days, just to kind of reflect for a moment before we start our job as public servants. Thank you very much, and Mr. Obed, if you would kindly introduce our staff that are here?
Sure, Mayor. So we have myself, obviously, Damian, the manager, we have our city attorney, Joan Barker, here tonight. We also have department heads, so starting with Chief, Police Chief Michael Parrish, our Director of Administrative Services, Angela Quarter, our Director of Public Works and Engineering, Craig Scott, and our Community Development Director, Noah Howt. I believe that rounds out staff for tonight.
Thank you very much. Now, I would be looking for the approval of the amended minutes.
Move to approve. This is Councilmember Harvey.
All second half members, Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much, Lauren. Lauren, I was going to let you read the rest of the announcement, but since you're not, you're a little under the weather, I'll go ahead and read them this time. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code to 888-777. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. So now, we will move on to presentations. And I believe this will be Ms. Quarter, our Director of Administrative Services.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff, as well as members of the community that are joining us this evening. I have the pleasure of presenting an unaudited financial report and update for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Sorry for the traffic. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. Lauren, can you skip to the next slide, please? Thank you. So briefly, we'll go over some highlights from the report, which include the overview and summary of the financial position for the general fund, as well as the water and wastewater enterprise funds, as well as the cash and investment positions. This is all as of June 30th, 2021. The next slide. The next slide as well. So overall, the citywide revenues are at 95.7% of the annual budgeted amount. This is a shortfall of approximately $1 million, and this is primarily due to the reduced transfers from the general funds and other special revenue funds to the capital projects. So really, it is also reduced expenditure on the other side, as it is a revenue on the other side. So it's a little misleading, but that's the statement as to why we are under. Otherwise, without those expenditures and the timing of the capital projects being delayed due to COVID-19, we would be right in line for our revenues. And again, these are also unadjusted, so we are expecting some revisions for final sales tax receipts, as well as final other adjustments for revenues that are coming in that are delayed due to timing that will be accrued for our fiscal year audited financial statements. So alternatively, the expenditures are at 84.7% of budget, and again, this is primarily related to those capital projects and special revenue fund expenditures, and the timing of the projects that were altered due to the expanded COVID emergency and elongating of those projects or timing differences on those projects. Next slide. So overall, revenue and expenses are in line with budget and our budget expectations. So not just in comparison with last year, but with our budget, with a decrease in both primarily due to decreased transfers of funds. So I talked briefly about those transfers rate for the capital projects, but also due to internal service fund transfers that were required for payouts or other related internal service funds for our vehicle replacement schedules, for our other employee payouts that were delayed as people were taking less time off, getting less payouts because they were in shutdown and here servicing our community. The expenses are at 84.7% of budget, in line with our expectations, again, due to delayed projects. The next slide, please. So net revenues over expenditures, so again, unadjusted, have increased by over 300% to over $1.1 million when compared to the same periods in prior year. Alternatively, compared to budget, we are under budget by approximately a half of a million dollars, where revenue is over budget and expenditures are slightly under. Sorry, it was the next slide. Thank you. So here's that showing of that 1.1 million of the net revenues over budget, or sorry, excuse it, over revenue over expenditures at that 300%, and then when comparing it to budget, is that approximately $500,000 under budget due to reduced expenditures. The next slide, please. This is my favorite slide. So it's just to emphasize on the importance of our revenue structure and our continued emphasis on economic development and diversification of our revenue streams. As you can see, we are very in the general fund, which is the main source of funding for operations for the city, is primarily funded by sales tax in the city. We also then shortly followed up by property taxes, and then due to continued development, we see that increased community development charges is kind of bumping into that third place now. Next slide, please. So enterprise funds for the city are our water and wastewater funds, AKA sewer funds. You want to go into the next slide? Thank you. So overall, again, our enterprise funds are in line with budget as well as comparative last year. We'd like to see the revenues trend in line with our fees, with the rate increases, and make sure that they're matching for those expenditures that are also increasing due to increased service requirements. And as you can see, the revenues for water and wastewater, though wastewater is a little bit lacking behind due to other changes in the averaging due to reduced usage in the prior year. Expenditures, as interesting that it's the influx where expenditures in water are significantly less than budget, whereas wastewater are right in line with budget. Next slide, please. So our cash investments are really focused on keeping it balanced, as well as making sure that they are properly in investments and earning returns where we can, even though there is very, very slim interest returns at the moment. Keep going to the next slide, please. So we have approximately, as of June 30th, $19 million in cash and investments for the city, with it primarily invested in the local agency investment funds with 15.7 million, and then some smaller amounts in the Sonoma County investment pool, as well as some small CDs with RBC Investments. Exchange Bank, we did have a significant balance as of the end of the year, and that was due to some cash coming in due to grants at that point in time. So this is in line, we make sure that this is in line with our adopted investment policy, that we are only investing in those types of funds that are allowed, and that we're meeting the operational needs for at least the next six months, at least half fiscal year within these pooled cash funds. Next slide. Here's just another breakdown of those cash funds, because it is all pooled, that 19.2 million does not all belong to general fund, it belongs across all of the funds. So the general fund does have 7.3 of that, 19.2, and then the rest of it is broken out around the other, the rest of the remaining funds, with for approximately 4 million within the special revenue funds, some in our successor agency, and then our water and wastewater. Followed, and then I'd also like to provide that breakdown of the investments by the piece of it in a pie, so you can kind of see the percentage that we're holding into each and each part, and how we try to keep that operating cash not just sitting there, not investing and earning some returns. We have it in life because we can pull down funds next day. It's very liquid and available to us while still getting some return on it. So next slide. So overall, compared to last year, as well as compared to budget, again, it's unaudited. There will be some adjustments and accruals for the end of the fiscal year. We're still working really hard on that to get ready for the audit that we've pushed forward in order to get you audited financial statements, hopefully before Thanksgiving is our goal. And so we're really on track and feel like this, even though we had COVID, we prepared for it, we budgeted for it, we adjusted for it, and it shows in our financial statements that we're as strong as we could be in this situation. There's no additional budget requests or adjustments. At this point in time, the budget that was adopted was appropriate. We're going to continue to provide council the updated quarterly financial statements because that was a feedback we received last year due to COVID, that it was great getting the feedback of what the financial standing is for the city, and so we want to continue that going forward. And we're going to continue to be committed to having the best prudence and integrity within the management of our systems and providing this transparent information to our community. My presentation. And again, we have the full report that was available within the packet, and that will be published online as well.
Thank you, Ms. Quarter. At this point, I'll bring it back to the council if they have any questions for Ms. Quarter. Wow, that looks pretty good. So no questions, that's great. I do have one question for you, Angela. Lauren, if you would flip back to packet page 25. On that, I guess on that slide presentation.
Just one moment.
Thank you. So the local agency investment funds, if I read that correctly, the yield on that is half a percent, and the yield on the Sonoma County is 0.5. the yield on that is half a percent, and the yield on the Sonoma County is 0.52%. I know we have low interest, but those seem exceedingly low. Is there any explanation on that?
That's where rates are right now. And we have to hold funds in very secure avenues. The life fund is actually trailing the Fed. So while the Fed, they are usually pretty close, they're usually a little bit higher than the Fed rate of return. And so we're still getting a little bit better, but it's not, it's going to be trailing where we'll actually earn a little bit less than what you'll earn on the Fed market rate will be. And so it's because the timing of their investments are future looking, and the returns that they receive are then distributed. So that's just where we are in this market right now. And that's why we're having the discussions we are around the unfunded liability and those bonds components is because that's really investment in our paydown of our debt.
Do you know if the life and skip funds, if the yield on these investments is smaller than the fees?
And the skip, I believe, we are not assessed fees on either one of these, I believe.
Okay.
Because we're a local agency, so we're just a part of the program. We're allowed to participate.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just, I know we were in low returns, but I was like, holy crow, that's pretty low. Thank you so much, Angela, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you for the update. And with that, we will now move to approval of the final agenda. Any changes to that, Mr. Obed?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to citizens' business. Ms. Burgess, would you find out if we have any attendees that are interested in speaking at citizens' business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you're using your telephone to, if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will move on to our consent calendar. There's no one interested in pulling any of those items. I would entertain a motion on that.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar, this is Councilmember Ford.
I'll second that, this is Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. And now, are there any suggestions with direction on future agenda items on the council? Is this the dog days of summer in August? Thank you very much.
Well, I believe that we gave the city manager quite a few items at our last meeting. So I think we'll give him a break this time.
I do have to chuckle when I was looking at the minutes. I was like, oh. So now we can move on to our regular agenda items. And the first one is a presentation of the updated Veranda Fleti Ranch work plan. And I believe this is going to be Mr. Obed on this.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'll do a little introduction first, and then I believe some of our partners have some, some things I'd like to say about the work plan as well. So first of all, just as in way of introductions, I'll introduce Dustin Di Matteo, who I think you all know is the face of Farmster. Tonight, we also have Ashwarya, who is working on the younger children educational programs in the work plan, and also Jeff Kelly, who's working on all of it together as well. So in way of just a little background, this is mostly covered in the staff report, but I'll touch on the high points. So the city purchased the ranch in 2008 through an open space in agricultural preservation district grant. And as part of that, the property does have a matching grant agreement, as well as an open space conservation easement, which preserves the property forever, but also sets out the certain uses that are allowed on the open space property, and also limits on, you know, new infrastructure and things like that. So there are, there is kind of an open space box, so to speak, that we operate within. And then in 2016, the city did its first sort of major round of infrastructure work, which was new perimeter fencing around the entire property, as well as the pathway along East School Street and the picnic areas. That was all part of the 2016 infrastructure work. And then in 2018, there was a series of public workshops and requests for proposals, and this was the process where Farmster was selected for the license for the property. And that license had an initial term for three years, which is, that first three-year term is this September, which is one of the reasons why we're talking about it now. But also, that license agreement has options for two additional five-year extensions. As you all know, more recently, in 2020, the city performed some new, some additional infrastructure work, which was a complete reconstruction of the water tower, as well as extensive refurbishment of the ranch house to make it safe and also usable for programming, which is one of the things that we discovered when we were in the first three years of our license. We were looking at the potential uses of the ranch house and the water tower, for that matter. And there was a lot of, there was issues with it that we really couldn't have public, we couldn't really have the public in those structures. We didn't have a restroom that was available. So there's things like that that were limiting factors in that initial term. Most recently, of course, COVID has sort of slowed everything down, including some of the public programming on the ranch. But as everyone will recall, earlier this year during strategic planning, the ranch has had these significant infrastructure improvements, which now allows for much greater accessibility for the public. And as we're hopefully slowly coming out of the COVID restrictions and we can start having more public engagement out there, as well as the, kind of the end of the initial three-year term is really the time to look at, you know, what comes next? What's the next, you know, step in the, in the public outreach and educational programming that we have, that we'd already programmed for the ranch, but now we hope to build on. So one of the focuses of the work plan that you'll hear about tonight are the intent to continue to build on the public access and really trying to get much more public access into the property and more engagement through lower cost or free programs or events out there. And also, a much deeper integration with city recreation programs, and hopefully some additional urban farming activities, trying to get that launched, and then creating a real, hopefully solid mechanism for ongoing facility maintenance and resource management. I will also add that the open space district, they do have to review our work plans as well, and they've done a preliminary review of the one that we're talking about tonight. And conceptually, they're, they're good with it. So I just wanted to let the council know that too, that the open space box that we have to operate within, which is, you know, largely, you know, farming, education, and that sort of events along those, and recreation, those kind of, those kind of activities are what are generally allowed within the open space easement that we have. So it's, they've found it, you know, substantially consistent with that. So just know that when you're, when we're talking about the work plan tonight. And with that, I will hand it off to Dustin to do the introduction for his team. If you wouldn't?
Awesome. Thank you so much, Damian. And to the rest of city staff and council. Some of you were there when we first got this project started almost three years ago. So it's good to see everybody even in a more digital, unimagined space now. So wish we were there at the council chambers. As you mentioned, I have Ashwarya, as well as Jeff Kelly here, who are our go-get-it teams. So I appreciate all the volunteerism and time and energy and planning efforts put in to make today even possible. So without further ado, I'm going to see if I can share my screen real quick. Oh, if there's any support, Ms. Burgess, to have some host privileges, so I can share my screen. And what I'll be sharing and making a lining statement on will be the work plan proposal, which is included in the agenda packet. We, as a team, very much look forward to presenting a more traditional PowerPoint presentation, as well as additional once confirmed budget detail and scope in a follow-up council meeting. So what we will is just overview some of the key takeaways and highlights for the community, as well as open up any opportunities for council staff to ask any questions, add comments that they may be interested in doing, so.
Dustin, if you'll just hang on one second, and...
No rush.
You should be able to share your screen as a panelist, but unfortunately, since that's not happening, we're going to do something different, and you should be able to. So just give us a second.
Okay, sounds good. Lauren, I believe the issue is that somebody else is already sharing. So if that person stops, then I think...
In all these years, we've been taught to share.
Just no kicking sand on one another, John.
I think it's Sandy Loam, isn't it?
There we go. That was a very, that was a very good joke, Councilmember Moore. For those that don't know, that's the soil type out here in our region. So without further ado, I'll cover some of the historical context briefly. Later, I'll be passing off to Ashwarya so she can speak to her own involvement in this joint venture proposal. But without further ado, once again, I'm Dustin Di Matteo. I've been so fortunate to serve the city of Kattati and those visitors over at the Veranda Fleti Ranch via the capacity of Farmster, which began in 2015, just as an idea by four recent graduates at the time of Sonoma State University. Yes, Mr. Councilmember Ford, I recognize you. I remember you as one of the amazing faculty over there at the university. Our mission at the time was to grow food and farm skills with aims of sharing those byproducts and benefits of the mission in those said resources locally, in the Roanoke Park at the time, and then later, after a couple of years, when we found this amazing RFP available through the city of Kattati with those residents. As I continue on to additional background, over the last three years now, Farmster, you know, and myself has served as primarily the lead operator of the Veranda Fleti Ranch. And during that time, we not only opened up the ranch for regular free programming, such as Open Farm Fridays, as well as inviting rancher-to-rancher workshops to take place. We've worked with the city and staff to enhance this beloved property over time, as Damian mentioned, not just to the fencing, but the water tower at the farmhouse looking amazing with their recent renovations, as well as within the last several months, additional mulching, landscaping. We have a couple greenhouse projects that, one of which is just about 95% complete. We've additionally hosted a diverse array of livestock to its pasture. And what I like to think is we've grown in not only the hearts, but the minds of this community through a lot of people-powered projects, including local dedicated volunteers. Additionally, through the alma mater, where I come from, as well as Jeff, we've hosted a numerous amount of interns, as well as still to this day offer, on a semester basis, special studies projects to business departments, marketing departments, HR departments over at the university, and still maintain that pipeline to include Sonoma State students and opportunities that you only really see up at the junior college via shown farms. So we're super fortunate that we get to share an experience and educational journey with both faculty and students over there. All of this was accomplished through a lot of blood, not a lot of blood, but a little bit of blood, sweat equity, and definitely some tears, as myself being 100% volunteer steward of not just the land, but the livestock as well, in the backdrop of, you know, a couple raging wildfires, a global pandemic, and an intensifying drought. As we open up, I don't like to read too much off of the slide deck, and this is in the packet for everybody, but there's a couple really key takeaways in this upcoming five-year renewal and part of this new vision for Farmster, as we've grown this brainchild, as it's really standing up and walking on its own. But looking to the future, Farmster and this partnership envisions the Veranda Fleti Ranch to develop into a community hub that highlights the natural environment, the rural history and spirit of Sonoma County. So we work very closely with the Kattati Historical Society. I just, out there at the ranch with them, you know, not even two months ago. And they were blown away by all the improvements, as well as the historical preservation that we bring to this project. And central to this vision is the development and implementation of, as Damian said, additional access in the form of educational community programming that really focuses on sustainable agriculture and food production, as well as native plants, ecosystems. And in Sonoma County, we have a very diverse cultural heritage, including that of Sonoma's Native American community. So with all of that, you know, I'm very proud to say that we've continued to make steady progress towards gathering support and developing a model that works for Kattati, a small city bound by its agricultural roots, which represents a beacon of historical values and stewardship forever through its binding conservation easement. And this model is represented in the five-year plan. And it's separated into three major components you see here. You know, number one, A, here is managing the farm and its natural resources responsibly. Number two is developing educational programs, both for youth, and I'll let Ashwarya speak to Sandy Loam's efforts there in the youth initiative. But also, given COVID and the adverse effects of in-person gatherings online, you know, sharing those educational resources online much more than we ever planned or expected to. And then lastly, renovating and continuing to improve upon the facilities and infrastructure, such as, including some temporary shade structures, the greenhouses that I mentioned, and driving key fundraising efforts for the renovations of the two remaining barns that we have on site. So in the coming months, what can the community, what can this council expect from us? What you can expect to see from us is full-time Farmster representation at the ranch, increased efforts to build upon the sandy loam soil, which we sit, for crop production and livestock raising, as well as volunteer activities and special events that will be announced through our fresh website and newsletter. You know, to that end or new beginning, we are so excited about not just the potential in this demonstration farm, but the steps the community get to walk hand-in-hand with us as it continues to develop from what has gone by in a flash these last three years. So we are so grateful, once again, to the city staff, council, our partners who make all of this go around, and at the core of it, volunteers. The success of this plan truly depends on the support of the city and this council, and we remain committed to the demonstration farm's mission, the impact and the valuable outputs for the Kattati residents at large. For those at home and council, you all have a packet of this. It is quite lengthy, over 20 pages. So I will scroll in order to just show a little bit of our implementation team. There's myself, we have Ashwarya, Jeff, and then we will have, which is Jed, but a number of educators supporting this process in order to ramp up the educational learning journey that residents and youth will have so much fun out there, learning about ag, land, livestock, horticulture, et cetera. So without further ado, I would love to pass it over to Ashwarya to speak to it a little bit on her end, as this is a joint venture proposal, including Sandy Loam and her initiatives. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to seeing you all at the ranch.
Thank you, Dustin. I don't know many of you, so I just thought I would take a minute to introduce myself. I am Ashwarya Pintarla. I'm a proud Kattati resident and the administrator for Bright Size Montessori in Pen Grove, Rainbow Bridge Montessori in Kattati. I am also the administrator of the program housed at Veranda Fleddy Ranch, Sandy Loam Montessori, which we proudly named after the ranch's fertile soil composition. Our organization of schools relationship with Veranda Fleddy Ranch began in 2019. My husband saw a property around the corner from Rainbow Bridge and said, we should check it out one day. I strolled over and met a friendly farmer there who turned out to be Dustin. Back in 2019, I never imagined we would be here today. Together with Farmster, we developed a field trip program for our students. We wrote and received grants to build out that kids zone you have probably seen grow right in front of your eyes. We've hosted events. These were all small steps that have informed and defined a beautiful vision we share of providing community access and farm education on this unique and beloved ranch. I hope that through our programming, we will inspire young people to love nature and provide them with the practical skills to act on its behalf. Kattati residents of all ages will be able to access the ranch with Sandy Loam focusing on sustainability minded programs for children and youth. Initial program offerings include summer camps, youth internships, after school programs, and community access days. The programs described in the work plan are the foundation on which we will build with our city partners. We are honored to have the opportunity to work with the city and, in effect, my neighbors in Kattati. Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation. So I'll turn it back to Damian. Thank you so much, Ashwarya, for everything.
Thank you both. So I was just going to conclude before we go back to council that. So, you know, what we're looking at tonight is the work plan, and if there's any input or questions about that. And then the next step is to is to come back with just an updated license agreement, which would be September 14th, the next council meeting is the plan. And as was alluded to, later this fiscal year, we are planning to start the public, the public design process around the barns and what, you know, what happens next with them. What does that refurbishment or reconstruction look like? What are the uses that the that the community wants? Because it really, that's, that's really what drives it is what are the, what are the intended uses? And that drives the form. So a lot coming up. It's pretty exciting at the ranch. And as Dustin, as Dustin mentioned, it's been 100% in this initial three year term, 100% volunteer effort. But in order to really, you know, get the kind of engagement and full time education that that I think the community has been asking for out there, it became clear to me at least that the city needs to participate with a, you know, with a partner financially. So that's, and that was all part of our budget discussions and the budget this year. But I just wanted to point that out as well. We come back with the license agreement. There's also a, a city financial commitment tied to the work plan. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, as well as I'm sure Dustin or Ashwarya or Jeff.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, Mr. Di Matteo and Ms. Pintarla for that update. With that, I will bring it back to council now for any further questions on that. And let me go so I can see. There we go. I can see the hands. Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a pleasure to see this. It's three years seems like a world ago. And indeed, it was a different world, but it's heartening to see the progress and all the things that are going right over Veranda Fleddy, as well as the talented people are working together on it. So I'm very pleased about that. I do have a couple of questions, probably more, I think, for Farmster, perhaps for the city manager, I suspect. One relates essentially to the view, the view for the public, how they conceive. The other would have to do more with the tension between fundraising versus being a good neighbor. So I'll start with the view questions that I had. And as I look at the nice diagram that you have on packet page 131 that shows an aerial view of the ranch, two things came to mind. I noticed that the animals have a livestock grazing zone now. But it's kind of in a corner, a segment of the ranch where it's really not terribly visible as much to the public. Now, the temporary grazing area is better. That's an area that's relatively visible, but I'm not sure how often they would be there. So I wanted to ask about that because I know one of the joys for the public, especially before COVID, was watching the animals, watching the cycle, literally watching the cycle of life with the animals interacting. I saw that numerous times, and I think we all did anytime we drove or walked by that area. Related to that, I wanted to ask about the plan for a pollinator hedge, berries in particular, in the corner that is actually just, it looks like it's stuck right next to where the oak tree and the picnic tables are. And I asked about that. I certainly see the logic of having a pollinator hedge. That makes a lot of sense for what you're doing. But my concern would be the view there. My, I'm not sure what you're planning. You're probably already ahead of me on this. But my experience with berries is they crow quite happily and resist efforts to keep them shapely. And I would worry about having views of Veranda Fleddy blocked to the public because it's something the public really likes. So if you could speak to those before we go on to my second question, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Absolutely. That is a fantastic inquiry. So context around the site map. Back in December of 2020, when all of the site map work was starting to come to a head, that was built upon an effort where Farmster actually paid for technical assistance with the Sonoma County Resource Conservation District. So I had worked independently, as well as gathered input from city staff and other horticulturally minded folks about some of the best practices that we can bring to this conservation easement within the scope of what we're allowed to actually do. And so to respond to your point about the view, that is a piece of feedback, and this is a concept map over the five years about what this could look like. As Damian mentioned, it is conceptually approved by Ag and Open Space. If we were to embark on any aspects, for example, the greenhouses of this, we have to go through a permitted use request with Ag and Open Space. So just that, as well as that row crop space taken up on that site map, just about a third of the site itself and the grazing area, those are still concepts that need to be discussed and thought out. And at least what I can guarantee to you within the first couple of years, effectively removed in order to promote what is the biggest community need right now with COVID and what has been a diminishing return of people at events and going out, a lot of homeschooling and people needing access to walk around the ranch and allow the cow to come up and say hi to them. So we will not be moving forward and diminishing those view returns, if you will, to the community by any time soon. And this is part of what Damian was speaking about in reference to the fundraising of the site for barns. But it was happening to what the community needs and making sure that we aren't moving forward too quickly with our goals and ambitions that we may have. So I can guarantee the view will stay as is. They will still, the livestock for grazing purposes, as well as as we're entering into this five year contract, they will still have about two thirds of the property to roam just about freely. We will promote better grazing habits, so there will be more strip grazing, but they will all still be accessible, at least as the map doesn't necessarily depict. And for the hedgerow, that is actually the second number two point when talking with neighbors that was a problem. And as mentioned, it is a conceptual map, and we are trying to identify other areas that will not mitigate the Rancho Adobe community that sits with what I would believe is one of the best views of the property. So this is stuff that we will continue to receive technical assistance on and update this map periodically. And if there are any major or significant changes that would actually infringe upon our conservation easement, which Open Space is one of the greatest qualities the ranch has, we will be in a format such as this with community input and data supporting it. So.
That's perfect, Dustin. Thank you. I'm really glad to hear that you're already talking to neighbors about this, even in these early planning stages. I agree with you. That is actually a wonderful view there, very, just a perfect place. And, and I recognize there's a lot of interests that are all important to balance here, and I know you'll do your best with it. I would just ask you, and it sounds like you already have it on your mind, also as you're juggling all these needs to keep in mind the views for the community, because I know they like them very, very much. So. And that's a testament to the success you've had so far. So, and you gave me the perfect segue too, which is why I like working with you. You mentioned the community events and fundraising events. And I want to jump to the event management. That was the one thing where I saw, at least for me, a potential caveat, something I, again, like the previous thing, just want to get your thoughts on and raise a small concern. Private event rentals, leveraging the facilities and assets for event rentals. Now, we knew when we had our community meetings for this, there was a lot of support and interest, but there was also concern what sort of neighbor a ranch could be, a working ranch could be, a farm could be. Because as we know, there can be noise, it could be problems, and it was, we promised that we would be good neighbors. And I know we have since, and I think you've done an excellent job with that. I think the public is fine with community access and kids programs. I think some parking taking up a lot of the city spaces over by City Hall and in the city complex and in the areas over by the Chamber of Commerce offices isn't problematic whatsoever. But if this was something that, if events happened with great frequency and became impactful to the neighborhood itself with either parking issues or noise, that could be a concern, I think. As I look at page 148 in your component C for facility and resource management, it mentions at the bottom of the page, under private event management, that the city has no real role responsibility there, that it would be Farmster approving and developing feasible private rental opportunities. And I'd just like to give the input, I'd like to see some sort of feedback loop to make sure that if, first of all, to protect against problems, to be good neighbors with the community. And second, also, if something does develop where despite our best efforts, we're having problems by impacting the neighborhood, that we're able to deal with it. I'd love to get your thoughts, and that's a direction, I think, or at least a suggestion for the city managers comes back to make sure we keep that, because we've had really good support from the public having this in the neighborhood, and I'd like to see that stay.
Well, that's a great, a great question. I'll let Damian speak to it as he needs to from the city, at least from our end at Farmster and obviously including Ashwarya here, because they will play a role in the youth educational setting, right? There are a couple of controls in place, and we are working on the license agreement to make sure that this proposal is coveted by and enforced by the regulatory controls of Ag and Open Space and you all as the city and your ordinances, sound ordinances, right? I believe there's a clause in there about any events need to be scheduled and approved. And so we'll have to amend that in our proposal, the roles and responsibilities, because Damian said in integration with Park and Rec, you know, through a 90 days, three months notice, that is sort of a filter in case, hey, we have a great idea for a Farmster festival, big bands, music, this, that, and another. That is the check valve right up front is with you guys in approaching the city humbly in requesting something like that if it were to come across as something of interest to the community or staff to host for fundraising or educational purposes. So there is still that 30 minute check, 30, 90 day, three month check valve with the city where we're not necessarily integrating with Park and Rec and city staff, but we are in regular communication with, so there aren't any surprises. And then there is also, once again, the overarching conservation easement that we essentially can't affect or through normal operations, create such a ripple effect to the community of the culture, of the open space, of the agricultural roots. So by no means is this going to be a party zone. But there have been just amazing interest in over the last three years and lessons learned about what, what works and what is warm with the community, such as, once again, fiddling to the, the youth and the family orientation of Kattati, birthday, small birthday parties and small little tours. You know, we've even had a small appreciation dinner where we gathered community and, and, you know, different residents and tours of the ranch with like a just small jazz band and making sure that we're not encroaching too much into the evening hours. But there are a couple of controls, and we will make sure that if there are any ordinances that we lament them in what would be like our license agreement as we develop it. So. And it's the times, you know, with COVID and all of these sorts of things, I've made it a a very pertinent point with the partnership team. We should go, we should go very slow at this point and really grow our vision fully and scale as necessary. But I see Ashwarya unmuted herself, so I'm going to pass it over to her before I ramble too long.
Thank you, Dustin. Councilmember Landman, I just wanted to add one point related to a comment you made about access to the ranch and also access to the animals. So what we are planning in close coordination with the city's recreation department is that we would do a lot more than just have the animals be visible to the public. What we're hoping is to enable access for young children and youth to actually be able to approach the animals. My colleague, Tammy Eaton, is very knowledgeable about the animals on the ranch. She has already created programming that allows children to do everything from feed them, to learn about them, to pick eggs from the chicken coops. So we have a lot of access planned, and we are doing this in close coordination with the recreation department.
Well, I thank both you for fleshing that out a bit for me. And as I would have guessed, I think the direction you seem to be going is what we'd be expecting, and I think won't be any problem. I just wanted to kind of lay out that concern that the concept of private event management obviously can encompass from small things to much larger things and certainly from infrequent to very frequent too. So I think those are the things to keep in mind as we work in this. I would like to see it documented or made historical in this document somewhere. The part about the city's roles and responsibilities in this, local review, local ordinances, just as a protection, so we're all clear on that. But I heartily support where you're going with this, and certainly the type, size, and frequencies of events you've described to me don't seem problematic. And I think the neighborhood would actually be strongly supportive of them. So I appreciate your time laying that out for me. And I'll just leave those thoughts with the city manager as you go forward, talking and finalizing this too. So thank you very much for the time. Looking forward to see how this goes.
Thank you.
And I'll, Mayor, I'll just add that it's, you know, we, we have been, and I imagine, I expect, will continue to closely coordinate on on all the activities going on out there. So that's, there's that. And then as Dustin indicated, I mean, at the end of the day, the license agreement is the mechanism to ultimately control things if there's, if it gets out of control for some reason. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman kind of hit on the topics that I was concerned about. So thank you for that, Vice Mayor. And Dustin, thank you for your responses. I'm glad to see that we are moving forward, and I like the concept of the baby steps. And I am glad to see the new partnership. So thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming tonight and giving us this presentation. I wanted to ask two things. First thing, as I was reading through the work plan, I noticed there were several elements that seemed to me could work together really well. The plan for ornamental and landscape plans, plants, water management demonstrations, a small urban farming demonstration site, and possibly partnering with daily acts. And I was thinking, is there any room in the work plan and on the site map to have a small plot that's maybe the size of a suburban, a small suburban lawn that could serve as a really purposeful demonstration of, of a nice way to do a lawn conversion to low water use plantings? I've just personally gone through this recently, and the city of Kattati provided me with a, a plant list that were like approved plants. But boy, it would have been really nice to have someplace I could have gone to see those plants and what they look like. And, and I'm just wondering if you've given that thought or if there's, if there's any, I didn't see a spot on the map for something like that. But is that something that's. I didn't see a spot on the map for something like that, but is that something that's possible?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I'm, that was after college, one of my, this is how I got introduced to the council here, actually, was a program coordinator of Daily Acts. So there are many, as you know, types of no-mo, low maintenance types of lawn alternatives, and the best spot within the site map, as it currently sits, I have the staff report in front of me, but it'd be just in front, not on the greenhouse side, but more on the East Katati, West Sierra side, but it's a rectangular zone, we call it our cafe zone, but that would, that is probably going to be the best spot for us to experiment with some drought tolerant, no-mo, you know, maintenance, low maintenance types of grasses that we can demonstrate. And that's really a lot of the resources we're trying to promote in this new phase over the five years is things that people could literally take a little plant start of it and try it in their backyard, both on the horticulture side and also the livestock side, playing into the chicken ranch aspects of the history there. So that is a great point, and we do have a little soft spot for some of those grasses to go in mind.
Thank you. I would, I would love it if someday there could be some signage and labels and things so people could walk, walk through and see the different possibilities and, and anyway, so thank you, that's, that sounds wonderful. My second question was just about the, on page 143, sorry, 141 of the packet, you talked a little bit about internships, and I'm sure you're on top of this already, but I just wanted to mention, I, I work in the Earth and Space Sciences Department at SRJC, and I know that our Environmental Studies major has a required work experience component within it, that that might be an opportunity for partnerships to get some JC students who are, would be on that degree.
That would be fabulous. Yeah, any connections, I can follow up with the offline, I'll find some contact information, and that would be great. We're starting to get inundated with SSU requests, and it's usually business and more recently an HR department, but environmental studies, we've had a few interns, but we'd love a few more, so.
Great.
We'll get offline, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Thanks for the presentation. I love walking by the ranch, and like Vice, Vice Mayor Landman, I, I love the unprogrammed interactions with what's going on there and the ability to see the livestock when I drive by. So I, I appreciate the planned programmed interactions, but I want to echo his point that the just walking by on the street needs to still be a special experience there and not hide the livestock behind berry hedges and on the back part of the property. Also echo Councilmember Sparks's mention of a, of a demonstration site for lawn conversions, a great idea. The one thing I wanted to mention is in the education component, just in the final agreement, I'd like to see particular attention to access of local public schools. There's a, a potential conflict between operation by operators of local private schools and public school access, and so I just want to make sure that's clear in the final operating agreement, that local public schools are particularly recruited to take advantage of the opportunity. Thanks.
Councilmember, I'd love to respond to that. We are passionate about increasing access to public school students. We are actually in the process of developing an after-school enrichment program specifically to serve the community's children. We are also working to go beyond even serving public school students and targeting preschools in walking distance of the ranch. You may not be aware, but there are several preschools that are just a couple blocks away from the ranch, and so we would love to invite them in for field trips, for small demonstrations in partnership with the city, and we're actually very excited about that program. Again, my colleague Tammy Eaton will be leading that project, and plans are already underway to make the kids zone accessible for everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then finally, I had a couple of questions on there. To piggyback on Councilmember Ford's question, I, in looking at the email we received later, that was the Sandy Lomontisori, I'm assuming that putting a, a school in this particular program is cleared through the Open Space District? Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah, the educational component, there's, it's right in the wheelhouse of the intended use of the property.
Well, I get the educational component, but actually housing a school on that property, is, is that something that you can, you can clarify that?
Well, I think it's, the, the work plan is, you know, running educational programming out of the ranch house and the property, generally speaking. So that's, you know, I don't feel any conflict there with the Open Space District.
Okay. And then as, as Councilmember Ford alluded to, I don't imagine that there's any RFP for any other school-type programs to, to participate in this to the level of the Montessori?
This is, so the intent was, you know, as we're reaching the end of our three-year agreement, it's just the, the next evolution of the path we were already on, but really bringing in the partners, Farmster's bringing in, you know, bringing in the partners and joint venturing with Ashwaria really to deepen that educational piece. And so it was a, it was an organic evolution of the next steps that we all were heading already, but really deepening that for the community.
Go ahead.
But, but I mean, you know, in terms, if you're asking about like an official RFP process, that was, I mean, you know, as you know, when we did the original selection with Farmster's lead operator, that was, that was part of our initial process, but it wasn't, it wasn't something we were contemplating for this next term of the license agreement.
Okay, I'd just hate to see, you know, Bob's Montessori come back and say, hey, you never included us and gave us an option here. You know, I mean, when you talk about equity and diversity and inclusion, I want to make sure that we are, are not inadvertently excluding a potential partner that, you know, could be part of that.
Councilmember, if I may respond to that, our vision for the ranch is to encourage local preschools to have access to the ranch, especially in the middle of this pandemic, which has been extremely difficult for preschools and providers out there. And our hope is that we can grant free and frequent access for teachers and for children to come in and participate in activities at the ranch, particularly in the kid zone. We have actually, up until now, taken on the responsibility of opening up the ranch for accessible all types through summer camps, but also open access days such as during the, the kids, kids' day at our own expense, and we have been volunteering, because this is a passion project for us, and the intention is not to exclude, it is to include. And that is why we really value our perspective relationship with the city's recreation department, because it will allow us to open up the ranch and provide these programs at little to no lo, no cost. So we, just as an example, we recently ran a pilot summer camp, and the rates for that was, were pegged at Camp Katati's rates, even though that was going to be a loss for us. We, again, did it because we are passionate about being at the ranch and working with children.
Thank you. Conceptually, I think this is great. I think that the whole around the Falletti Ranch is a wonderful asset for the community. I think it's great that you guys are in there and willing to, to see this program go forward. There's a few things I'd like to see when it comes back, if possible, would be timelines. In, in the, you know, proposed project, there were no timelines other than a five-year project. So I, you know, I think it'd be good that we'd have some sort of benchmarks, and I know there's going to be some variables in that, you know, predicated on your funding and how things are going in that regard. So I, I get that, but, but that might be something that would be, I think would be good to see going down the road. But other than that, I think it's a pretty good program. And then I think the only other thing that I had a concern with this was the level of city responsibility and oversight. I think that that needs to be tightened up so that it's really a clear direction and definition, so that, you know, if somebody comes back and says, well, that's the city's responsibility, no, that's, you know, the program's responsibility, so that way we have it clear and, and nobody can down the road say, oh, we missed that, because I've seen that before in other things. But I, I think it's great, and I think what you're doing is really good, so I look forward to that. And Dustin, did you want to add to that, or?
Just want, no, just want to say thank you, Mayor Moore, for all those questions. And like I said earlier, we very much are looking forward to a more detailed presentation and thorough discussion to address some of this feedback that's come up across the council. So, thank you.
Terrific. And with no other questions from the council, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. We will take public comment. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello, Council. Thank you very much. This looks to be a really great project. It's fantastic to see it and the scope. I, I do think that managing it for the sightlines from the road would be really, really excellent, because that would give very much a layered approach to it. I'd just say that I think it's also having the hedge rows in there as part of the sort of long-term educational, it's certainly an excellent idea. I'm trying them out myself, and it's a way of really introducing a, a concept that would be very valuable, to figure out a way of having that be, be something that people use. The Huga culture as well is also an excellent concept, it is time-intensive. I have been trying it out on my property for the last 20 years, or parts of it, aspects of it, so that's really great. I very much hope as well that Thomas Page Academy could be, have a, a path to the school and be able to walk there. So that would be really, really nice to put those elements in there. So, so good luck in the evolution of this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil.
Brittany, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's Brittany Murphy. I'm just, first wanted to start by saying thank you so much for the incredible transformation that we've seen at the ranch. We walk by it daily. It's been exciting over the past couple of years to see the changes, and it's just beautiful. We are so grateful for it. My family and I moved to Katati from Santa Rosa, and when we moved here, one of the main reasons why was the, you know, sincere sense of community, walkability, and the fact that we would be able to live and work here, socialize here, and also walk down the street and send our child to school here, and that, that walkability and community is so incredibly valuable to us. So we go to Rainbow Bridge, and I wanted to support the collaboration here with Sandy Lom, which is the sister school. What I've seen as a parent at Rainbow Bridge is that the emphasis from this group of teachers is so heavily focused on empathy, kindness, being a good neighbor, learning to be accountable, and teach one another love and support, and that is absolutely what we need to see right now especially. So I want to emphasize that because these are the things that Rainbow Bridge is teaching our children, and I'm really hopeful that the city will continue to support this collaboration with Sandy Lom and the ranch, because it's just so wonderful to see that we're extending these opportunities and adding the agricultural component and providing our children here locally so many opportunities to learn and grow together with the kids that live just down the street. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, we do live about a block away, also about a block away from the park here. So we're very used to events happening, whether it's at the park, or the brewery, or, you know, any of these other areas downtown, and we see a lot of traffic and parking and all that, but I did want to speak as a resident in this area. We know that comes with the territory, and it's something, sure, it is an impact, but I will say as a resident here, so close to downtown, it's something we know comes with the benefits of being able to have so much accessibility and so many amazing community events so close by. So I think we do have some understanding and willingness to be flexible to ensure that we can use this ranch for a number of reasons, events, community projects, children's programs. We're just so excited to see this happening, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brittany.
Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, just another thumbs up for this project. It's been, it's a very exciting and inspiring vision. I've also loved seeing the changes on the land with the improvements to the buildings and the water tower, and of course, the animals and seeing children out there and everybody always enjoying the animals, and just seeing more and more happening in the middle of the town, it's very exciting. It must be a very unusual program for a town to have this right in the heart, and it fits so well with Sonoma County and Katati and, and previous, you know, general plans for Katati and sort of the vision of a small community that's got both urban and rural aspects to it. It's also very exciting to hear about all these possibilities for the future, for education, for everything from small children through to internships with the JC and SSU, especially in this era of climate change, when we really need to learn how to live better with the land, and it feels like this is what it's all about, is exploring and educating and demonstrating better, better ways to live with the land. So that is fantastic. I also wanted to back up what Neil said about the walking from Thomas Page School to take part in events and the programming here, that would be fantastic. And of course, there's also the other school in Rona Park, University Elementary at La Fiesta, which older children could walk from along the Laguna. And I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of meeting some of the teachers at Rainbow Bridge Montessori School, and they're an incredibly dedicated, passionate, inspiring, wonderful team of people. I'm sure they're going to do a really fantastic job here. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Jenny.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. So with that, I will bring it back to council and see if there's any further discussion on there. Okay. I believe this is a receive and comment, which we have. So I thank you all very much for that presentation and the information, and I look forward to the next information that you'll be presenting to us. I would imagine maybe September or October, sometime like that.
September 14th, plan from moving back.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all too. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, so now we will move on to item 11B, potential expansion of COVID testing to all city employees, and I believe this falls in the lap of our city manager, Mr. Albin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is, this is being brought back at the request of the council in the prior meeting, and as I think everybody knows, the Sonoma County Health Officer has issued a order for public safety, so that's police, fire, EMT, kind of personnel across the county. The order is C-19-26, and it basically sets up a, a two-tier system for either, well, either requires that the personnel in those job classifications are vaccinated, or they have to be tested weekly. And in addition to, I guess what had previously been the norm is, is often, oftentimes is often, oftentimes employees self-attested to their vaccination status. This order requires that the employee produce physical documentation of the vaccination, whether that's a vaccine card or some documentation from the provider. So that health order was issued earlier this month at the start of August and it goes into effect for all public safety personnel across the county on September 1. Recently, the county of Sonoma basically followed on that health order and expanded the scope of it to all county employees, so beyond just their public safety employees. And the county set the effective date for the rest of the employees, the non-public safety group of employees, at September 7. So a week after the public safety employees were covered under this order. And also the city of Santa Rosa, where is planning at the end of August to have a discussion along the same lines. At least that was as of last week. And for implementing something like this, I don't, so if the council is inclined to implement this for all city staff, it doesn't look to be a significant issue because we are kind of pathfinding the testing programs with the public safety, the police staff. And so once we have those systems up and running, which we've been working diligently on, by September 1, it won't be much more effort to expand it out to the rest of the staff. The main considerations are just simply the cost of the test. And as an employer, all employers are required, obviously, to pay for the cost of testing. And then if they have to, if the employee has to go off-site for testing, have to pay for the employee's time to be tested. So we're looking, obviously looking for solutions that will not require traveling anywhere, but hopefully get tested here onsite to minimize the amount of off-site time for people. But we're still, we're still working on different options there and I don't have a 100% solid solution as we speak tonight. And I think that's, that's sort of it in a nutshell in terms of the bookability. But basically what we'd be proposing is taking the existing health order and essentially expanding the scope to all city staff, similar to what the county's done. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any on it.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I appreciate that. And I first of all need to commend you and the staff that we've got at least an 83% vaccination rate among the staff. So I think that's good. And with that, I will open it up to Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. A couple of questions. First, is that 83% rate a self-attested rate? Or have you actually been collecting data so far, collecting documentation?
Well, it's, so it's the combination right now. We haven't, we started collecting documentation. We don't have all of it, although we're a small organization so we all pretty know, pretty much know who's vaccinated and who's not. So I feel pretty solid about that.
And then the other is, does the county order have sort of benchmarks for ending the weekly testing requirement for unvaccinated? Or is it just until the order is amended? And in that case, how would we build that into our program? Like, could we just tie the end of our program to whenever the county says their program is ending or something like that?
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point. So I didn't see anything explicit in the county's staff report about it, but unless I missed it, but I don't recall seeing anything like that. I guess what I was suggesting was that it would be either tied to the health order itself being rescinded or modified or the city council rescinding the declaration of emergency for COVID.
Right.
But probably some direction on the firm end dates that we all know.
And then, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I would prefer to tie it to the health order so that it automatically, you know, is in step with rather than having to wait for the next properly noticed city council agenda and things like that. And the last question is about the, in the county health order for county employees, is it just a choice? An employee can choose to either be vaccinated or do the weekly testing? Or is it as the, my employer's system is, the requirement is vaccination, there are some, or an approved exemption for medical or religious reasons? And if you have an approved exemption, then you're subject to weekly testing?
Hey, so it's kind of a two-part, it's kind of a two-part question because part of the county workforce is, is healthcare workers, people that fall into the healthcare category. And there are, there is a current state order that requires healthcare, people that work in a healthcare setting to be vaccinated, like period, right? Unless there's the exception that you mentioned. But that, and that order doesn't go into effect until the end of September, the state order, September 30. But that's, but that's the, that's a subcategory of the county staff. The general staff that don't fall into those categories are just, it's still basically voluntary vaccination. So either people could be vaccinated or they need to test weekly. It's one or the other at this point.
Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Obed, I wanted to ask, so at this time, we're not sure if we'll be able to have low-cost or free onsite testing to minimize that employee time to test. Obviously, I prefer onsite and I know that will be the ideal goal. But if we can't get that, I wanted to ask, are we allowed at least if we have a known destination that our employees have to travel to, to test? If a reasonable timeframe could be determined and assigned to that?
I think, yeah, so I will say, just to give a little bit more detail, I feel fairly confident that, that we're going to, that we're going to have an onsite resource for like the rapid testing, the antigen testing. So I don't think that's so much going to be the issue. It's more if somebody's symptomatic or, or somebody tests positive on the antigen test, we have to send them out for a PCR, you know, confirming test. And we do have some, we do have some locations nearby. I think Petaluma is one that we've used quite a bit. So.
In that situation, and I'm hoping we don't ever have to see that situation, but if, when we did, I would certainly not be as concerned about it there. I was just thinking on a regular, ongoing basis for this more simple test. So that sounds good. We're a very public-facing organization. We have law enforcement that interacts with the public day in and day out. All our employees in City Hall that work with the public and our few employees that don't work with the public still work very closely with all of you who do work with the public. So I'm supportive, very supportive of the concept. I wanted to ask if there's planning to include the council in this? When and if we get back to a point where we almost were recently, where the emergency declaration had not been rescinded, but numbers were good enough that we're ready to have live meetings again. And I suggest this simply, I'm comfortable requiring this of our employees, but I kind of feel I should be held to the same standard if I'm going to be, when and if hopefully we get to go back to having public meetings together. So I just wanted to ask if you'd considered that and if that's something we might consider including. It's the best form of management, I think. If you show you're willing to do it too, that's important.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why the council couldn't be part of that. You know, once we're all back in City Hall at meetings, you know, that would make sense. And that, I think that would, I think that would be, show good leadership as well. I agree.
Yeah. And hopefully we'll get to that point quickly and hopefully we'll get to a point quickly enough where we don't even have to worry about it. Until then, I just wanted to ask. So thank you. That all sounds good to me.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor Lemon. And I absolutely agree that the city council should be held to this requirement as well. The, my understanding was that part of the reason these health orders have the testing option was because when they were being drafted, the vaccines did not have full FDA approval. And so there's some legal questions about requiring it. But now that the Pfizer vaccine has achieved full FDA authorization, I'm wondering if the county is going to come back with a more stringent requirement that doesn't basically allow anyone the option? Doesn't just, just let just anyone have the option to not get vaccinated? So is there a way that we could build into this policy that should the county come back with a different recommendation that doesn't include that very lenient testing option? That we could go right ahead and alter our policy to confer, to conform with any new recommendation that comes out? Is that, can we build that in somehow? I guess that's my question.
So the, you know, so some of the state health orders, the statewide health orders that require like vaccinations of healthcare workers, they intentionally set the go-live date for end of September because, you know, people kind of on the inside that know what's going on with the FDA review process had contemplated that the FDA would finally approve at least one of the vaccines by mid-September. And that's, so it was no accident they set it for end of September. I mean, that, the other reason, of course, is to allow people to get fully vaccinated, allow that time. But, but I think the order, the order itself was in July and, you know, September 30 seemed like a long while. But that, that was the rationale for it is that, that FDA would approve it by the time the order went into effect. And if it didn't, I guess they would extend the date. But to answer your question more specifically for here, if, if the health officer were to say, this is what you have to do, then I think it's kind of a moot point. Everyone's going to be required to do it, you know? If it's just the county government saying, hey, we want to do this voluntarily, it's, it's a bit of a different question. I don't know that we could put an automatic trigger in there because at least I would, you know, need to have conversations with the labor groups and it would be a more deliberate process rather than just flipping the switch. Whereas this, this program, I feel no problem extending to the rest of staff because there's an option. But if you, if you remove the option, I think it's going to be something that's going to require more thought.
Okay, that makes sense. Well, I, I would, I was thinking more of the county health recommendation of how they were requesting employers to proceed. You know, and that recommendation is what included the testing option currently. And I was more thinking if they come out with a request for employers to implement broader, a broader requirement, then I would very much like for us to revisit that at that time, I suppose.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I just want to understand a little bit more about the testing and giving employees time off to be tested. In your example, it sounded like if we did a rapid test and they were possibly positive, we would want to send them for a PCR test. There's the actual testing and then there's a lag one to two days to get the results. So are we required to pay for that employee to be off during the waiting of that, of those results?
So last year, in 2020, in the original like COVID legislation, they, all employers were required to add 80 hours of special COVID sick leave, right? And then again, and again, in a reauthorization in January of this year, they added another 80 hours of sick leave. And so this is.
So a total of 160 then?
In theory, if, if people actually used all the 80 in the prior year, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But it reset it to 80, basically, right?
Reset it, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so, so in, kind of federally, that was set aside that every employer has to provide 80 hours of additional, you know, addition to whatever sick leave program you already have or leave program you already have, you have to add hours for COVID specifically. And so what that means in practice is that, let's say, let's say somebody's symptomatic or somebody tests positive on an antigen test, they, they go, they go get the test and then they're, they wait 48 hours for the results. And so during that time, they are excluded from the workplace until they're cleared to come back. And during that time, the intended use of that COVID sick leave was to pay for that time. If, if they've used all the time, then they have to use whatever leave they have generally accrued for other reasons, you know, vacation or sick or whatever they might have.
Okay, so that's helpful to know that, that while we have to pay for the employee's time, it's covered from within that special 80 hours. It's not, you get paid and then if something happens, you get another 80 hours. So.
Yeah. Okay, I got that saying, I guess in theory, if someone didn't have any leave, then I think we'd have to cover it.
Okay. But that would be kind of a rare situation. And then does that also mean that we run the possibility of having to pay overtime for other employees to cover for that individual that needs to be out? From a financial perspective, that's not mentioned in here?
Yeah, it's definitely possible. I mean, that, that's the case already though, you know? If someone tests and then they're out and we have to cover their shifts, for example. That's. Yeah.
Okay, because that wasn't mentioned in here, but that is an extra cost of that. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, you had additional questions?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to get clarification on Councilmember Harvey's question. So, Mr. Obed, you're not saying that employees who take their weekly test because they've chosen not to provide documentation of vaccination have to stay away from work until they get the results of their weekly test? What you were discussing is only people who are symptomatic or who have positive tests?
It's correct, yes.
Okay, right. So the people who are doing their weekly test, take their test, they come back to work. If, if it comes back positive the next day, then we deal with isolation?
Yeah, it's, so the antigen test that we, that I'm feeling, I feel pretty confident we'll have here onsite. It's, it's a 15-minute screening test. So it would be relatively rapid. It's only, as you say, it's only if they are symptomatic or they test positive that they would be isolated from work.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Harvey.
So what you're saying is the intent is to use the rapid test onsite if we can get it and that loss of time at work is going to be minimal because you, like you said, it's a 15-minute test that we only get into longer periods of time if that result from that test is positive. And that could happen, I guess, on a weekly basis, although I would hope it wouldn't happen. It could happen.
Yeah, that's, that is accurate. And sort of a compounding factor is that schools are all back in session now. And so people are just getting sick like they always have. Every school year, you know? I mean, unrelated to COVID, but just other things circulating. So if people are symptomatic, you still need to confirm that it's not COVID, you know?
Okay.
I, I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you, Mr. Obed. But I will go ahead and open it up for public comment if anyone so chooses to jump into that.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. On to our attendees tonight. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. So I will bring it back to the council. I think this would be something that the council would have to determine if there is a consensus to go forward with this versus an actual roll call vote. Would that be correct, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I think the direction from, or the recommendation from staff was to provide direction to the city manager on whether to implement a policy. So if the council has any direction to the manager, could be given in that form or, or you could all vote on it if there was some controversy.
I would entertain a motion if you guys want to. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Well, I was just going to give direction, but I can give a motion too. I was just going to say that I'm supportive of giving the staff direction to implement the vaccination and testing policy. And I also wanted to add that I'm supportive of the interesting point that Councilmember. And I also wanted to add uh that I'm supportive of the interesting point that Councilmember Sparks brought forward and if the situation develops to a point where broad that broader requirement could happen, I would be supportive of that as well. Uh, having said that, I'll make a motion, we direct staff to implement COVID-19 vaccination and testing policy for all city employees as described in the agenda piece.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, Ms. Burgess. Would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. And uh for full disclosure, uh I am fully vaccinated, so I do support this 100%.
And uh one more just clarification. So we would be striving to get this in um in place for all staff September 7th, kind of in line with the county's timeline.
Thank you very much.
Just to be clear, there was a comment earlier about uh whether this policy or might this policy apply to the council? Um, you know, Damian's going to implement the policy and he doesn't have the ability to tell the council that they need to be vaccinated. So if that's a direction that you all want to follow, uh the council should probably take an action to confirm that it's your expectation that each of you be vaccinated if you're present at the at the council chambers.
What particular format do you think would be best on that, Mr. Barker?
Well, I don't think it really needs to be a written policy because honestly, it would it would it would never be enforceable. But um, you know, it it could just be a a council verbal uh emotion policy that that it's your expectation that each of the college, each of the council members would be vaccinated.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Well, I was gonna say, we are technically employees of the city, so I had assumed the policy would apply to us unless we were specifically excluded, but it sounds like Mr. Barker says that's not the case. So I would support whatever whatever means of of uh, you know, including us and in the expectation will work.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
I guess I was headed along the same lines because as far as the government is concerned, we are city employees. So I I guess that I just assumed when it says for all city employees.
You are considered employees for the purposes of federal taxation purposes, but um but the the personnel policies and all the other typical policies that exist at the city do not apply to the council. The council is hired and fired by uh the voters of the the city of Kattati and uh so that the control over the council is really could, the the voters control you, not 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 uh not the the city itself. So it's kind of a unique situation, but the council can adopt policies that apply to itself.
Thank you. So confusing.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, I I would just if this, we're talking about this tonight, so I think we could make this motion that we just and see if we have if we do have unanimous agreement, then I don't think there's any problem that we all agree to abide by the vaccine and testing policy as council members when we're back in public meetings and the emergency declaration has not been pulled yet.
So moved.
So I'll move that. It looks like I think I have exactly coming, so.
I'll I'll second that.
Okay, and then we had a comment from um Councilmember Sparks. Was that what your intent was going to be?
Yes, and I I just wanted to say if we're going to require our employees to um provide documentation rather than just self attesting, if we want to really obey the spirit of this, then we ought to all send uh Mr. Robid a documentation of our vaccination, so we're following it the same way everyone else is.
I would be happy to amend my motion to include that. I'm wondering, do you feel we should do that ahead of time? Or would that be done at the point in time when we know we have live meetings coming, but the emergency declaration is still in order? Would that be acceptable?
Either either be okay with me if you're asking me. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to get your opinion because it was your suggestion. Perhaps if we should say that our documentation should be into the city manager before that situation arises. And that gives us, we can all just send it tomorrow if we're in the mood? Or for those of us who are late getting things done, like I can be from time to time, perhaps it's a little closer to the deadline. But either way, we get it done in the time we should. I'd be happy to amend to include that that we get our documentation to the city manager uh before public meetings are scheduled.
Uh, it appears we have a motion and a second. Um, then we'll just do a roll call.
Mayor Moore, just to clarify, is the second coming from Councilmember Ford or Councilmember Harvey?
I think Councilmember Ford was first.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, um, thank you very much, fellow council. I think uh, as was indicated previously, uh leading by example is the best way to go on that one. Okay, with that, we will move on to, I believe, the award of the construction contract for the 2021 Westside Street Project. That would be Mr. Spark.
Craig, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. I just need a second to get the screen set up.
You know, I was just gonna say that the uh city manager cannot tell the council what to do.
Someone else is sharing the screen right now.
Just one second, Craig.
Okay, thank you.
We might have to buy the deluxe version of Zoom.
It's a multi-step process here. There we go. Okay. Uh, Mayor, thank you, members of the council, members of the public, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Uh, okay, so tonight's item is the award of the Westside project, street project, construction uh contract. And uh we came, we 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 brought this matter, staff did, before the council back in April. And it's been a a real whirlwind uh project here, getting it ready to bid and bid and awarded or uh ready for consideration by the council in August. I think that's a new record for staff. Um, we did open bids today and they were favorable. So that's the teaser. I do have some background and context to get through before uh I present those results. So uh the presentation basically will go through the the what the what frames this project up. It's within a five-year CIP for streets that was presented two, I think, three years ago now. Um, I'll I'll present how our progress through that CIP has been, going just quickly through the completed streets just for last year and this year. Not going through past last year because we had a number of significant improvements before then. But I just want to focus on last year and and this year and then upcoming street projects, including this year and the next. Um, and then we'll jump right into the Westside street construction project and then finally the recommendations. So the five-year CIP, as I mentioned, was presented uh to council a couple of years ago and it is based on the uh pavement management program, which is a state mandate of all cities, if cities want to be um eligible for state and federal grant money for roadways. And our last update was 2019 and just this last month, our streets were inspected once again. And so we'll be seeing another report being published. Um, it'll probably have a uh uh 21 due date on it. Basically reflecting inspections for this year. Um, the five-year CIP um is looking, we're looking, we're just getting a uh consultant under contract because now that we're clearing out the projects in the five-year CIP, there's some openings now. There's there's going to be three years at least of open years that we need to populate with with forthcoming street projects. So that's just showing how successful we are in in getting through the CIP and taking it seriously. Uh, the CIP has a package moves the 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 grade of our overall street, which is a pavement condition index, uh which is um the grade instead of A, B, C, D, E, F, it's it's from zero to 100, you know, 100% being your streets are just perfect. Um, we went from this full implementation of the original CIP will get us from a PCI of 53 to 67. And then the battle here is every year, every month, month and year that goes by, the um the streets degrade and there's a street paper model that models that degradation. So we've hit, I think we've hit 62, but it's since uh gone back to 59. And um the projects that we're we're doing this summer, hopefully, will get it, you know, notch it up a few points. So it's an ongoing battle. This figure shows the uh scope of the five-year project with each color representing a different year. And so just quickly, the, I mean, just in overall, generally, the named streets, the Outer Hub, were paved um in 2019 and then we went ahead and paved the the roadways on either side of Myrtle Avenue. Um, just in the last few weeks. And then the project we're considering now is the Westside Project, so it's showing up in orange on this figure. And um uh that's got uh a little piece of, most of it's Westside for its name's sake, but it does have uh roadways, a little piece of Old Ridewood Highway between Valprisa and Page. Um, John Roberts, we'll get into that a little bit later. But we're 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 getting through this uh the CIP. And the street presentation's not complete without at least just a passing glance at this slide. Uh, once it shows the relative costs of the treatments. And so the treatments we did uh just in the past few weeks in the Bird Section, in the Gary Way, Veranda, all of those places were on fairly on streets that were in pretty good condition. And it's a very thin uh emulsion layer with aggregate in it, which is called a slurry seal. And it's to provide a wearing surface for that roadway and and prevent the water from getting in and degrading the roadway as well as just providing that wearing surface and fixing any uh cracks and imperfections um in that roadway. And then you get all the way to the edge grind overlay is is a lot more expensive and um it's a thicker layer of asphalt. And after milling the road and then full-depth reclamation, which is the project we're contemplating uh tonight, is um is rebuilding the base, adding a cement to it and then uh repaving it. So you pretty much get a brand-new street and so you can see the dramatic increase in the cost. So we we want to get to those poor, those streets that are in poor condition uh and just bite the bullet and pay those costs, those higher costs to do that, so that we end up having um maintenance preservation projects of of that are much more cost-effective, the slurry seal variety. So uh the recently completed streets last year and this year. Um, and of course, and and I'm not, I'm skipping the streets we've done before, which are significant, but um just wanted to keep this very clear. Um, we we reconstructed the Hub Streets, so there's some pictures coming up demonstrating the FDR process, full-depth reclamation. Those are on Arthur Street, all Olaf, uh Henry, uh when when we did those a couple um just last year. Um, and then uh we had a citywide bike safety project, which is every year, we we pull out the lowest hanging fruit for enhancing bike and pet safety. And so that there's that list there that we did, the most significant of which is the three-way stop at West Sierra and West School Street, although each of these in their own way is a significant, significant improvement. Uh, we've got the uh West School Street pathway and the uh pavement maintenance of the streets that we're just talking about that we completed over the last few weeks. Okay, so upcoming street projects, we've got the the one, the subject of tonight, West Side, West Side Project. Then we have the Quick Strike Project. Uh, there's there's more on the next slide, but let me get to these. Um, it's F, it's FDR because these streets on the west side are in poor condition. So they justify full-depth reclamation, West School Street all the way through Richardson Lane. And then West School Street makes a turn after Richardson Lane and goes another, I don't know, 300 feet or so before it gets to our city limits, Clifford, West Kattati Avenue, long stretch there. Uh, and then it also includes the path over the hill on West School Street. Uh, includes John Roberts, and we're picking up Condor and Robin in the Burn area because those were in too poor a condition to slurry seal this summer. So we've got to catch it with this project. And then the Quick Strike Project, I'm happy to report, we're making uh really good headway. Uh, we're looking at submitting a package to Caltrans next week and then uh getting an in-office field review. This is the the project that we were able to advance through the Sonoma County Transportation Authority and to and to secure one and a quarter million dollars for the city of federal, state and federal grants. And that's looking like we're we're on on schedule to begin constructing that as soon as July of 2022. Continuing with upcoming projects, um, we've got Redwood Drive and Cypress. Um, and these are high state highway roads, so they're eligible for city and federal grant funds. So it's very strategic to have those designed this year and that'll put us in a really good position to get additional grant money. Um, and then uh since we're getting through our current CIP, it's it's going to uh need updating. And so we're we're negotiating a proposal with a consultant right now to go ahead and update that. So it's going to be ready to um incorporate into next year's annual budget cycle as well as giving us that five-year outlook. I do want to emphasize that the city's website has a pretty brand-new feature using ClearGov. And if you go to the Capital Projects page, you'll get a link and and there's budgets, timelines, project maps, plans, any, you know, as much detail as you want on this, on any of these projects we've got is available on that website. So I really encourage you to go visit that website. It's open to the public. So everyone is, it's it's public information. Very transparent. Okay, so that was the context, the background. We can dive right into the the Westside Project now. Uh, these are the streets I was talking about that are highlighted here. Um, so you've got most of them on the west side of Highway 101, but you do have that stretch of Old Ridewood Highway, Condor, Robin, uh John Roberts. And what these all have in common is the roads that are in really poor shape. And so once all the FDR equipment is mobilized, it's the same process for all of these streets, except for the end of uh West Kattati Avenue, just that end gets a um slurry seal. But the the vast majority of these, this is, everything else is the FDR. And you get you get better bids and cost effectiveness if you just And you get, you get better bids and cost effectiveness if you just bundle these same type of streets together. So further describing the project features. When we presented this project to the council in April, it, the, it was expressed, the desire was expressed to go ahead and put a pathway on West School Street here from West Sierra Avenue, all the way past the tunnel to connect to where the existing sidewalk is approaching Clifford. And the photos I have that are shown here, we've got the photo from the West School Street pathway, which is, goes down Richardson Lane. And this is representative of the pathway that will be constructed, which are in the plans today. It's decomposed granite with additive in there to keep it together. So it, it doesn't erode. And we've got, it's, it's on a base of gravel. And then along the Caltrans right of way, we'll, we'll have a few CMU blocks to, to keep that gravel from infringing on the Caltrans right of way and making a nice hard edge and make, so that we make the best use of the limited space. And this pathway is five feet wide along the, it's, it's entire length. The picture there in the middle, if you can see it, that is the view coming down West School Street, approaching the tunnel. And you can see it's approaching the curve where there's the guardrail. And this dirt shoulder is where the pathway is going to be installed. And then the guardrail, we're looking at putting a, a guardrail that's more aesthetically pleasing and in there. And it will, it'll, it'll be sort of a signature to that neighborhood. You know, we're, we're looking at some kind of a signature look as you enter that neighborhood rather than a Caltrans high-speed metallic guardrail. So that, that is being incorporated into the plans. And finally, for the roadway rehabilitation piece, these are the pictures of the hub street projects that were recently completed. Going from left to right, you've got the pulverization piece where we take the roadway and there's this giant rototeller and it takes all the material down 24 inches and just mixes it all together. And it makes use of all the existing materials. So we're not hauling off. The old fashioned way was to take all this and haul it away to landfill and then bring in brand new material that basically had the same properties that you wanted. So very, very wasteful. This way it takes it all, gets it in a real fine material. And then the picture in the middle, you've got the gray truck there. It's hard to see, but that's adding and mixing in cement to that pulverized material. And then you've got the grader on the right there, which grades it. And then following the grading is the compactor to get that all, that new road base, the brand new road base with the cement additive in there, all nice and compact. And you've got 24 inches of brand new solid road base. And so that's all ready for the paving. And you, the, then the asphalt, of course, is new material. And, and that's paving the brand new road surface. And then after that, of course, you get the striping signage, everything else that comes in, including sharos and bike lanes. Because we do endeavor to incorporate bike, bike, the bike and pedestrian master plan features into these roads where it's feasible. Okay, so. All right, so we, we, we just left the design phase. We're moving into the construction phase. Today we, we got two bids on the project and we opened those at three o'clock today. One was from Gelati Brothers and one, the other was from Granite Construction. Gelati Brothers was the low bidder. And staff has reviewed, carefully reviewed the, the bid, including addendums and subcontracts and bonding and every licenses and everything else that we looked for in a responsive bid. And I was found it to be responsive. And we're recommending it for approval tonight. The amount was $3,095,133. And that is 22% below the engineer's estimate. So staff, we were doing cartwheels in the hallways here when we opened that bid. For the construction management piece, we have Green Valley Consulting Engineers and they provided a proposal. We did the RFP process back in August 2019, which was an umbrella, kind of an RFP process. And Green Valley rose to the top. And so we went, they are the most qualified of that group that we looked at. And so we requested a proposal and they provided one. And then we've got Harrison Associates, which are already under contract to the engineering support during construction. So we, the staff feels we have a very good team moving forward on this. The construction work will be very carefully inspected. There will be an inspector out there every day, every hour of every day that work is happening, measuring quantities, making sure that the, the process is being done correctly. And when we get to the asphalt, making sure it's the correct depth, the right materials are being used, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so down to the brass tacks here, we had, we have in our current adopted city budget, $3.439 million budgeted for this project. Okay, with the construction bid in hand, the construction management and the construction contingency that the city holds on to, the proposed project budget is $3.704 million. So we have a need for a budget request of $265,000. And we're, staff is proposing that come from the unappropriated general fund balance. All right, for the schedule. This is where it's, it's, it's advantageous that we accelerated this bid opening concurrently with the day of the council meeting. I don't think we've ever done this before, but we saved three weeks. And what staff is very cognizant of is the approaching winter. And so we do not want to see this project be paved much into November and certainly not into December. So the contractor has 10 business days to execute the construction contract, get their bonds together, all their paperwork. And so we anticipate the notice to proceed, NTP, to be issued September 13th or to the 27th. And mobilization, so you've got all the submittals that they need to do. Mobilization no later than October 1st. They have a whole month of October to get that pulverizing done and the compaction of the base. And then, then paving could be in late October, even into November. And we're looking at substantial completion if all goes well with the weather and supply chain and subcontractor availability, everything in, in late November. So that leaves us with the recommendation tonight, which is to, I have, I updated all the slides, but this one. To adopt a resolution awarding the 2021 West Side Street Project to Gelati Brothers, Inc. And authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract, the construction management inspection agreement and appropriation of funds to the project account and any needed change orders and amendments to, up to the approved project budget. So that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you, you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And I need to know, were you really doing cartwheels?
That was a slight exaggeration. I think we had some dance moves and high fives, but yeah. And I don't think I'm capable of doing any of those people anymore.
Only OCO approved. We don't do unsafe procedures.
Of course. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Thanks for the presentation, Craig. Very helpful. Just a few questions that reflect my newness. So how do we notify people who are going to be affected by this process? Do we have a well-established procedure for letting everybody know what the impacts are going to be to their getting in and out of home and stuff?
Yes. First of all, changeable electronic message boards go up. The funding signs go up well in advance of construction. And then the actual residents and businesses that are adjacent to the roadways being constructed are sent letters in the mail and, and also on door hangers. And then NICSIL alerts are sent out to commuters, just people that may come through the area and use, use these roadways.
Great. Yeah, great. That sounds comprehensive. Good. About the budget request, I'm curious if the engineer's estimate was higher than the, substantially higher than the bids that came in. Why in our adopted budget, like why is the, the contract, you know, the construction amount now still higher than what we adopted in the budget? Did we not have the engineer's estimate back when we created the, the budget for the year?
That's, that's a very good question. We, we did the, I look back because I had the same question. And we plugged in the engineer's estimate as we received it from the consultant. And we did not, we failed to include the construction management cost and staff's construction contingency. So that was an oversight and that was my fault. But luckily our bid amount was, I don't know, $800,000 less. And so that made that discrepancy less apparent. But yeah, we, we, we aim to, to have those soft costs in the contingency part of our budgetary process. And I just failed to do that this time. So that was the reason.
Not a problem given the small requests now. So, and then a final one, I should have asked this back in April, but there's no, there's nothing in Caltrans long-term plans about wanting to complete that West Sierra interchange. Is there, they don't, they don't ever want to put a northbound entrance or a southbound exit there, do they? At West Sierra?
That is, I believe in a regional, in the CTP, the Transportation Commission, long-term planning document. But that would need substantial money from regional traffic mitigation funds. So it's, it would, it would be quite a ways off.
Presumably railroad would come first, I hope.
Yeah, that, that's, that's part of the mitigation list of projects as well as a southbound off-ramp at the West Sierra, as you, as you say, and others around, around there. And those, those are a little less tangible and less in our control because it relies on, on a CTA and the regional use, approving the use of those mitigation funds.
Okay. Well, I hope it's a long way off because we're going to build a new street here that's supposed to last a long time, right, where they'd have to put their exit.
Thanks. Mike's my element.
Well, I, I like the story of doing cartwheels in the hall. And I, I understand, Mr. Scott, that it's more difficult to do with every year that passes. But I'll point out, it doesn't hurt to try. After all, it would be a workman's comp injury if you hurt yourself. So, so you are protected. Having just terrified the city manager by making that recommendation. I did have a couple of questions for you. Just in general, and I know this is a practice usually followed, but I wanted to underline, to make sure that we ensure our contracts, our work setup, our project management fully protects the city from poor performance, particularly from subcontractors. And as much as legally possible, requires full restitution. In other words, everything made right in the case that occurs. I, I'm thinking of recent events and we've done a lot of projects and this rarely happens. But from time to time, we do have issues where the performance is not ideal. And we find it very difficult to get that alleviated. So I just wanted to ask what we can do to really nail that part down and get a little extra protection.
Yes. So the, the city's standard construction contract has those provisions in it that the contractor is responsible for constructing the project as per the project specifications, which are very exacting. And if those are not met and the product isn't per those specifications, the city has the wherewithal and responsibility to demand that it be redone, fixed. And so what we just saw was, was an implementation of that where the contractor at no expense to the city went back and fixed areas that got damaged after it was applied. So those provisions are in the contract. So.
I'm just looking to the quality of the fix because I understand the contractor went back. But I understand, and I haven't seen it personally, so I'm only going by the media bubble that I live in and what I've heard from colleagues and neighbors. But that, that that fix was not as ideal as possible. And again, that's not certainly a fault of ours, but I'm just looking for protections going into the future. Let, let me ask you. So it's a project manager that's responsible, as you put, every hour of the project to watch this and make sure it's done right. If this isn't done right, doesn't come out appropriately, what hap, what recourse is there with the project manager? Are there, do they take a, a cut in pay? What are the things that we can leverage to make sure that this product comes out as it generally does for us? Good.
Yeah, the, the, the biggest hook that the city has is, is withholding payment. So there's the, the progress payment and then the city retains 5% retention. And so that retention is to ensure that any of the punch list items, all of the punch list items get addressed as well as the contractors paid their subcontractors. But, you know, certainly that the work is being done to our satisfaction. So along the way, we have the progress payments and then at the very end of the job, we have that 5% retention.
So if we do wind up in a situation like we recently did where the contractor or the subcontractor had to go back out and redo something, is there a project manager, somebody overseeing that process to make sure that that's acceptable when it's done? Or would they be for us?
Yes, it's, that, that work is inspected just as the original work was inspected.
I just want to make sure we have that going for it. That's perfect. One last easier question. I guess this is the appropriate time to discuss the projects themselves since they're coming in front of us and we have, we're being asked to award bid. I wanted to make a small request. I really wanted to say first of all, how much I appreciate the recognition that these areas we work in sometimes are entryways, or how did you put it? Signature looks for neighborhoods. And although we are of course limited by the funds we have, when we build an entry, something that essentially functions an entry of neighborhood, we should certainly do our best to try and make it match the neighborhood. Ideally, if we can look better, but it certainly, certainly shouldn't look bad. And I always felt the previous Caltrans metal rail was not ideal for anywhere in Catati. So I'm really glad to see us move. I've seen some pictures of the wood. It's an improvement that is still somewhat utilitarian and spare. I wanted to request if we could, something I've seen in many neighborhoods for decades, many decades, which would be small stone monuments, probably at each outpost location. Not anything huge, but just something that's attractive and leavens the somewhat industrial state park look of the, of the wooden beams that are bolted together. And I suggest that because it looks good. It certainly states what you were talking about, making sure there's a signature look for the neighborhood. But also because at those locations where you typically put something like this, which would be at the top of the hill, right where the path ends and right at the bottom where it starts. these aren't the curve where we're protecting pedestrians. Uh, that's not the dangerous angle where cars usually hit. So I think the possibility of those stone structures getting tagged and having expensive repairs is much less likely. So I just wanted to put that request in if I could for consideration on this project. Because I think we have one chance to do this. Uh, if we can do this now, it would be a good thing to do. And certainly it's a consideration as we move to other neighborhoods in years to come.
Councilmember Landman, I just want to be honest here. The stone structures would need to be designed and have structural analysis done on those because there, there would be substantial structures. Um, what we, and, and, um, I would not recommend that we include that in this project because of the, the sensitivity to the timing and coming upon winter time and all of that. Um, so I'm going to keep this as, uh, I think, I think the city would be benefit from, from keeping it to its, uh, close to its original scope. What we could do is accommodate those end treatments on the, um, barricades. Um, so that in a future time, as part of the way finding project that's designing, has already designed structures like that to come along, we could add it to that project or perhaps have it as its own separate project because it's, it's so different than a roadway project. We can incorporate a pathway, uh, to it. But to have some significant architectural stone structures along the way, I think that's, that's a big ask for a street project on the fly.
Perhaps I'm not, I was thinking of something when I say stone monument, I'm not talking about, you can't even see my hand in the picture. I'm reaching up very high. These are typically pretty low. It's just more a little decorative rockwork put around a frame. Um, it's pretty typical for this sort of thing, really. I mean, I, I, I get if there's structural analysis or something that's problematic, certainly I wouldn't want to delay this, this project. But I also know that if we put off and say we'll get to it later, I'm still waiting for my curved streets in the downtown. So I'm a little loathe to do that with this project too. I would just leave it at this, ask for you to take a good look at it, uh, get the set, the smaller sense of what might be done and if there's something can be done to do this. I think this is the appropriate time to do it. Uh, and if we can, great. And if we can't, then I, I would certainly trust staff's judgment on this, but I wanted to at least make the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I had, uh, several questions. Uh, the first one was just on the background information real quick. Um, I, I noticed that on this five-year plan that's posted on the city website, Myrtle Road is, um, scheduled for, you know, back in the old plan, um, was scheduled for 2022 at the same time as, um, John Roberts. And in your background, you mentioned John Roberts as possibly in 2023, along with a little section of Old Red. And I was just wondering when, if you could real quick, tell me like, when is the plan for Myrtle? Because people were asking me about that.
We're looking at Myrtle, um, okay, Damian, you're going to have to, the city manager is going to have to remind, we have a, another, um, the, the Sonoma County Transportation Agency has a call for projects for five years. And that's due on September 16th. And so staff is preparing a, another companion five-year CIP to our five-year CIP and they're mutually exclusive. Uh, no, there's some overlap. But, um, we have Red, it might accelerate Redwood Drive, Cypress and Myrtle Avenue as well as the other piece of Valparaiso for 21, 22. So, uh, the most optimistic case for Myrtle would be to be, to, if, uh, that it gets in that CIP and we begin designing it now and we're also, we're constructing that in July as well, July 2022. That's the most optimistic. Um, and, and the significance, sorry about being long-winded, but the significance of that or is the CTA, uh, five-year plan lines up these projects with grant money. So each one of those projects we present would, would have $250,000, $500,000 of O-Bag or, or some grant, uh, applied to it.
I think, um, just to, just to add on to that, so we don't, we don't really have a firm schedule yet for it. Um, although I will say that, um, one of the things that we are, um, planning on doing is, is doing some dig-out, um, patch repairs in the interim, um, especially around the edge of Putnam Park. You know, which is the bad part. It's basically the, the section of Myrtle that was never improved because it's not part of the subdivision. So, um, right in the center line, the crown of the road. So we do have a near, we have some near-term plans to fix that. Um, but with regard to the road itself, it's going to be, um, contingent on, on grants and also where we end up with our bonding, um, front of, as part of our street work unfunded liability. That's going to, those are all dictate sort of timing of. So it's, so I'd say it's on, it's probably at least a couple of years out. Um, because we have, as Craig said, we have Redwood Drive, Cypress, Valparaiso, Myrtle, um, that, that are major sort of federal aid eligible roadways that we're, we're looking at trying to get all fixed in the, in the, in the next five years. Exactly what order that happens and we don't know yet. It depends on those other factors.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry for diverting off our main topic a little bit, but I appreciate the update. Um, second question, I, this is a question that speaks to my newness as well. Um, I, I appreciate seeing the bids that, that you're recommending. Um, is it customary that we only, as, as council, only see the lowest bids? Um, I'm just sort of curious what the other bids were or if there's a reason that, um, we're not, we don't see those at council.
Oh, um, there's no reason. It's, it's posted on the website. Uh, we, 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 we fill out the bid tab, which is the unit costs of all the items. There's something like 30, 40 items in the bid. All that detail has been sent to our webmaster. And so that'll be posted on our website first thing in the morning. And it's not only for the low bid, it's for all the bidders.
Okay.
And I, I guess to answer your question, that there was two bids, as Craig said, and, uh, uh, the second bid, Craig, was what, 3.5 million?
It was from Granite Construction, yes, for, uh, 3.59 million.
Okay.
That should have been included in the staff report.
Thank you. And were there other bids for the construction management and engineering support portions as well?
No, we, we, um, did that RFP process, identifying the highest quality, uh, construction manager. And, um, so then we asked for a proposal from that firm.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more question. Um, for the, the slurry seal that was recently done, was Green Valley Consulting Engineers the construction management firm for that project?
Yes.
And then, um, you said that there were going to be, um, extensive inspections done during the full grade, full grade, full depth reclamation, uh, as part of this upcoming project. Um, were, were there similar inspections being done during the slurry seal project? And, and how do we, you know, how do we ensure that there are inspectors really out there while it's occurring?
Well, the, the inspections are, um, are very rigorous. Um, there's, there's the quantities and, and the, the method of laying it down. Um, I think, uh, we had some, um, some incidences where I believe a garbage truck went into a cul-de-sac, uh, like, like eight hours after the slurry sale, which would have been fine for a straight of way, straight away. But with a cul-de-sac, there's like a 10-point turn that a garbage truck does. And it just, when you have a, a wheel of a truck that's very heavy like that, making turns while it's not moving, it's going to, it's going to rip up that, that slurry seal. So, um, uh, I think that the, the situation there was not having enough time between the slurry seal and having the garbage trucks come through that area.
There were other areas besides the garbage truck area that seemed to have damage on my, uh, walk-through. So I'm curious, did Green Valley, I, I'm just curious what this process is for inspections? Is there an inspector out there while it's occurring? Or do they come after the fact? Or how, how does that work? And are they planning to use the same process for the full-depth reclamation?
The, the inspector is out there, uh, as it's being poured, uh, as the, um, slurry seal is being applied. And then the FDR, the second part of your question, the FDR is a completely different process.
I mean, not, not, I know the process is different. I should have, I should have been more clear. I mean, the process for getting the inspector out there and overseeing the inspections, is it? I, I, I'm concerned. I want to make sure. I, I'm concerned about the level of inspection that's going on during the process based on some of the results that we saw. And I want to make sure we have more rigorous inspections.
The, the contracts typically, they, they require that the inspector is there when work is being performed. You know, so there's other times they might be setting up stuff and there's nothing really going on. Inspector may not be there. But, um, but the inspector is supposed to be there when there's work going on. And, and ultimately it's, you know, all this work is measured against the specifications and design plans. And so, uh, either the contractor met the specifications or design plans or they didn't, um, in sets. In this particular case, that's what we're looking into.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Hi, uh, thank you for the input, um, from Councilmember Sparks and Vice Mayor Landman. I am also concerned about the construction management. Um, I did go over to all of those streets and I, if, when they supposedly fixed them, um, I find it a little hard to believe that there was someone overseeing that, that fixing, you know? So I would really, I know we're, um, looking into that, but I, I would really like to know that that inspector really was watching that because it did not look, um, like it should look, um, from a layperson's perspective. Um, so I want to be sure, as, um, Vice Mayor, um, Landman and Councilmember Sparks have said, I want to be sure if we're going to spend this money on, uh, full-depth reclamation, that we are sure that it's going to be, um, inspected properly and not driven on for whatever period of time that needs to set. Um, I think that in looking, driving around the streets for the slurry seal, it would appear that, um, maybe they took some of the signs down, um, and let people on it a little bit too early. That's just what it appears from a layperson, um, perspective. So if we're going to go to a whole lot of effort to redo complete roads, I want to be sure that that asphalt is totally set up before we allow people, um, to be driving, um, on it. And I absolutely understand, um, Mr. Scott, what you're saying about, um, you know, trucks and from a standstill turning and that that can be a, um, that can be a problem. But what I saw over in that area was, was just regular cars. Um, and there are tire marks and then, um, just patches of things and handfuls of sand. So I just want to be sure that we, um, are on top of the construction management. So it sounds like we, our intent is to have, um, these contracts, um, there and to have them oversee it. But I want to be sure in practice, they are actually doing it and are held accountable for that. Um, my second concern is that normally our bid projects like this, we get started earlier in the year. And it sounds like we're not going to really get this, um, fully started in, until October. What plans do we have should, um, we be lucky enough to have a, a winter and be lucky enough to have rain? Because it seems like, um, I know, I don't know, half a dozen years ago, when we, um, did Old Red, we got hit with rain and that messed up, um, the road. So I want to know what plans we have so that we don't, you know, spend money and ha, and have a situation where it's raining immediately. And then lastly, it's just a comment. Um, I am so happy to see that god-awful guardrail is going away and we're going to have something more pleasant. That thing has bothered me forever. And I am so happy that we're going to put, um, that pathway there because as one who goes around walking the city, it's really pretty dangerous to have to walk on that road over the hill because you can't see on either side. So I'm so glad we're, um, we were able to work with Caltrans, um, to be able to put that in. So, thank you.
I could address your, uh, the rain schedule.
Great.
Yeah, I, I too hope we get rain.
It's a double-edged sword.
Just, just after mid-December. Um, so the, the first part of the plan was to get as soon a start as we, we can. So opening bids and having it considered for award on the same day was a pretty, pretty maverick move on our part. Um, and that will save us three weeks. We'll have, uh, we'll expedite the con, construction paperwork, uh, and hold them within the 10 days that's allowed within the contract. And, um, we'll get a detailed project schedule from the contractor. Uh, and there's, there's a period of time that's really critical of all the submittals that we receive. That is, they haven't mobilized yet. We're, we're making sure that everything's going to, uh, be in place for them to mobilize and act quickly and that their schedule is accurate. And so those are tools that we'll put into play that we, we have. Um, and then, uh, before they mobilize, if we're, if we're seeing delay after delay, then, and we're getting into November, if we haven't mobilized yet or even into mid, mid-October, we could just say, you know, this isn't working out. We're, we're pushing our luck. And, and, and we'll look at other options as to perhaps doing this in the spring or early summer next year. So we always have that as a fallback. We don't want to do that because we, um, we've got other projects we're going to be doing at that time. But we'll, we'll, we're going to keep extra close, uh, track of, uh, the schedule on this project.
So before we actually mobilize, we'll like take a look at, you know, that, you know, we get some extended forecasts on things. We'll, we'll take a look at some of those forecasts before we actually mobilize people. So we, if 10 days out, it looks like it's going to pour, you know, we're not kind of midway.
Yes, especially for the pulverizing and the grading part. Once, once we have that road base, that's all compact. Um, we do have a little bit of, uh, you know, we're just, we would look for a couple of week window in the weather to do the paving. So, um, there's certain, certain phases of the project that are very sensitive to the rain. And so we would be looking at those forecasts.
And doesn't that asphalt for it to set up, it, it, there's an ideal temperature that the weather has to be to for it to set up properly?
Yes, it's, it's something like 65, 70 degrees, uh, in the day that they look for. If it drops, I don't know exactly what, what that number is, but if you're in the 60s or 50s, it's, it's, it's not a good time to pave.
Thank you.
Um, having heard from the council, I will now open this up for, uh, public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Council Neil Hancock. Um, very interesting to see the projects and see it coming along. And I, I've just got a question about that portion of the road along West School Street to Maple Avenue, whether or not the path is going to continue along there. I, I am looking at the pedestrian and, um, bicycle, the bike and pedestrian master plan. Um, and just looking at, will this project conform with that? Um, so that's the question really, the, um, um, the, the West School Street and along there. From what I understand the presentation, it's saying it's putting in a pedestrian path. So West School Street from West Sierra Avenue, West School Street to the tunnel, there's a pedestrian path. And will that, um, be continuing along? Um, or what's the sort of the view on completing that walking path to the school? So that's my question. Thank you very much. And it's, it's great to see all the discussion going on in this. Appreciate, there's a lot of, um, Appreciate, there's a lot of, um, it takes a lot to make all this happen.
Thank you, Neil.
Would you like me to address that question?
Sure.
Okay, so we, we gave that a lot of thought. As, as we mentioned, we like to incorporate the bike bed master plan facilities in, in our roadway projects, and this is one of them. Uh, we look carefully at the street section and there is no room for a, um, class two, that is a, who is a bike lane on West, uh, West School Street or West Catati Avenue. However, the plan this whole time has been to have a class one, um, bike lane, which is a standalone pathway, a multi-use pathway along West School Street. And so we will continue to pursue, um, constructing pieces of that. We saw that down at Richardson Lane, that was a piece of that pathway. And, um, we are, staff is formulating a citywide sidewalk gap closure project, where we put on our CIP hats and looked long range over five years or more. And, um, we would be looking at, uh, making those class one bike, uh, multi-use pathways as a, as a separate project. Adding as part of this project, it would be off the roadway. So having it as a separate project, it's not digging up the road or impacting the newly paved surface because these pathways are separated from the road many times by a ditch. So they're, they're mutually exclusive projects. And we, uh, we would be able to pursue the class one bike lane separately.
Thank you, Craig. I will now bring it back to council. And if there are no further questions or comments, uh, I would entertain a motion. But we do have Vice Mayor Landman.
I can make a motion as well if you want, but I just wanted, I had one thing I wanted to bring up and, uh, or statement to make. And then the mention of Richardson Lane reminded me, that was part of that path project. I'm glad to see that working through that neighborhood. I think the path itself was well, well received. And I think that material kind of becoming a signature look for Catati, as we see it on the west side and right across from City Hall, was a great choice. But I will point out that the design of the wood fence there, I'll just leave it that it was not well received. And that's why I think I bring up that as we do these things that are entrances to people's homes, neighborhoods, it's really important to stretch it and do them as good as we can. Because historically, that's something that we haven't always been able to do. And I, I think the expectation would be to be able to do that hopefully now. So having said that, I just want to say I'm happy to support this. I really appreciate all the work that Mr. Scott's team doing. Uh, you guys have been really working long hours, I'm sure these last couple of years, and the town's looking better for it. I will say the only thing that troubles me is hearing that, at least from a staff perspective, that the, their perception, if I understood correctly, was that the project management process in our most recent small project over in the Myrtle area was rigorous. We have some very unhappy people in that neighborhood. And I think the council has been pretty clear. And I'll say myself, I'm not satisfied, uh, with that end result. Uh, I would like to, I think we need to hear some assurances of one, that this will be fixed. So it's not an eyesore that actually annoys the neighbors every time they see it for the next few years. And certainly that it won't happen again because there's a little dissonance between what we're seeing and the description, whereas the process, that structure gave us over a Myrtle. So I just want to leave that with staff. You can speak to that if you'd like, staff, but I will be also happy to move the resolution awarding the 2021 West Side Street project as described, uh, in the presentation tonight.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Burgess, would you kind of do a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Scott, for the information on there. I'm sure that the, um, inspector folks will be hearing more from us. No, maybe tomorrow. Thank you very much on that. It is 8:40. I am, we're going to take a, um, 10 minute recess and then we'll reconvene. A little bio break. Thank you. Looks like we're just waiting on a few more folks. Well, it appears that we have the full council back. So I will go ahead and reconvene at, uh, 8:51. Uh, Ms. Burgess, are you okay?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I don't necessarily always like to have that recess, but, um, knowing how due diligent our existing council is, sometimes I'm, um, weary to go that far without a break because I know we like to discuss things pretty well. Keep that in mind. Uh, thank you. Um, so now we'll move on to the discussion of the referendum, Measure D, on Runopark fireworks ban. And I think Mr. Obed is not discussing this a little bit.
Yeah, I'll give a brief staff report on this. So in, uh, in April of this year, the Runopark City Council adopted an ordinance which prohibited the sale and use of fireworks. And, um, reasons for the ordinance were stated in the, um, adopting legislation were to address fire concerns, reduce the public safety resource drain, reduce related litter and minimize large gatherings given COVID-19. I can say that, uh, obviously Runopark and Catati are tightly intertwined. And, um, the chief can attest to the fact that every 4th of July, we're plenty busy as well from all the fireworks that are going off. Even if they aren't legal in Catati, doesn't mean they don't cross the border and get used here. So, um, following the adoption of the ordinance, um, by the Runopark City Council, a referendum petition protesting the ordinance was submitted. This is what is now known as Measure D and is on the ballot, um, for September, um, September 14th. And, um, attached are some of the details about the, uh, referendum, the ordinance that was, um, adopted by the, by the Runopark City Council. If, um, if it was approved by, if this referendum is approved by the voters, it would repeal the ordinance that was, that was adopted by the council. If, um, if it's rejected by the voters, then, um, the city council's ordinance would stand. So, um, as I said, the council, the Runopark City Council adopted this in April, but because of the referendum, it sort of, um, suspended the implementation of the law. And, um, this last 4th of July, we, uh, did not benefit of the law because it was still suspended pending this referendum. Um, that's, so that's where things stand right now. Um, we're just waiting on the outcome of the referendum. And the item before us tonight is to, uh, is to review and propose the referendum and provide any direction to me if the council also desires, um, to take an official position through all that are issued by the mayor on this referendum. I'd be happy to turn it back over to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Uh, Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, um, Mr. Obed, just a quick clarification. Um, I, I believe that a yes vote on Measure D would actually adopt what the city council wanted to do and a no vote would reject it. I think he might have spoken it backwards.
I, I could be wrong, but I think it's a, it's a yes or no on the referendum which would repeal it.
I don't think so.
Am I wrong? All right. Well, yes, maybe it's going to turn.
Um, I'm reading it, it shall, shall ordinance 949, an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 949 of the municipal code to prohibit the sale and use of fireworks be adopted. So a yes vote adopts the ordinance prohibiting the sale and use of, of fireworks, I think.
Okay. Apologize if I misdeeded that.
Mr. Barker, I don't know if you have the opportunity or the ability to double check on that before we actually come to a vote, but we still have discussion on that at the moment. So that would be great if you could. And I see Councilmember Ford's hand.
Well, I forgot. We haven't had public comment yet. Do you want to have discussion? Or just, I don't actually have any questions. So I'll lower my hand if we're still in questions. Otherwise, I'll dive into my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Not at the moment. Okay. I will go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Mayor Moore, I look to our attendees tonight for public comment. And there is no public comment. That will end public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. So, yeah, my understanding was a yes. Well, now I'm confused the way Councilmember Sparks brought that up. Well, my understanding is the reason why we wanted to bring this was to support the ordinance banning the fireworks and oppose the vote to repeal the ordinance. So however, that language needs to be stated. Councilmember Ford.
Mayor Moore, I'd say that, I mean, I think Councilmember Sparks is correct that a yes vote votes to enact the ordinance that would ban fireworks. But that technical matter can be resolved, you know, once we have, by the city attorney and city manager, I think. So I want to talk about the substance about whether we should register an opinion on this referendum in Rona Park. I think it's clear that as a city, we do have an interest in the outcome of that referendum. That, as the city manager pointed out, that clearly affects us and it affects other cities in the county, perhaps none quite as much as us. And by virtue of being one of, I believe, only two cities in the county that still allow sales, it's clearly a magnet and dilutes the effect of our own ban on not only sale but use of fireworks. So it's clear that we have an interest. It's not clear to me that it would be politically advantageous to register a public opinion on the matter. I'll just speak about a hypothetical situation working in the other direction. If we had a referendum on our ballot and the Rona Park City Council opined on how our residents ought to vote, I'm not sure it would have the effect they hoped for. And I think the same is true in the other direction, that if we put out a public statement encouraging residents of Rona Park to vote in a certain way, I'm not sure that would have the effect we hoped for. So we might put out some kind of statement about, you know, a general statement about, you know, our ban on use of fireworks is. Enforcement of that is made problematic by the fact that our neighbor town still supports the sale of things that are illegal to use in our town. But I think an explicit position on the referendum might be politically unwise. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, it's interesting. I've struggled with the same thing. And I've kind of been flipping and flopping on that Ben normally. I'd be worried as being seen, as you put it well, being the outside interest getting involved. But I do know when I look and see TNT fireworks, one of the biggest companies operating, what, US, UK, Canada, Puerto Rico, largely funding the no campaign. I'm not as concerned about that. And more importantly, because I know that the Yes on D campaign, and it is Yes on D that supports banning fireworks, has been reaching out for endorsements from people outside. So what I would suggest if we choose to do this, I wonder if this is workable, if we choose to have this letter before the city manager writes it, we could give the mayor authority to confer with representatives from the Yes on D campaign and see if they, in essence, want this, would be an endorsement, a letter essentially supporting. And if they have any qualms, I would leave it to the mayor's discretion to choose not to have the letter written. That might be something that would solve our concerns. But I would say for me, I agree with your thoughts, definitely Ben, on the worthiness of it. I mean, like I said, I'm not as concerned about being involved with this. But what I am concerned about and what we're all concerned about certainly these days is fire safety. And seeing as the policy we support in Kattati and just about everywhere else in this county is to not allow this, how could we not say? I mean, I guess we're asked, how could we honestly not say that we support this and would like to see our one large neighboring community that doesn't follow the direction of the rest of the community? I'm pretty comfortable saying that. I could certainly support Yes on D just from that perspective. I mean, if I didn't support it, I guess I'd be trying to change our fireworks here in Kattati, and I'm sure not doing that. So I don't know. That's a buck. Maybe we could give the mayor that discretion if that doesn't raise any qualms from Mr. Barker. And if that's workable, I would certainly support a letter in support of this for the reasons we've mentioned, or the numerous reasons that most of the cities in this county support this direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I think that the solution that Vice Mayor Lemon proposed of sort of consulting with the Yes on D campaign is a really smart idea and I'd be supportive of that. And I also think, as evidenced by tonight's meeting, there's a lot of confusion about the wording on the ballot, whether people are supposed to vote yes or no, regardless of what they want. So I think just having as much messaging out there that, hey, we recommend a yes vote on D and just people are hearing yes on D, yes on D, will be helpful because the ballot language is confusing.
Thank you. Seeing any other council input on there. Councilmember Ford, I'm not too worried about offering our opinion for our neighboring city as it is a safety issue, I believe. And hypothetically, would you offer an opinion on a neighboring city on something as broad as polycyrene ban? Something like that? I mean, we look at things regionally, and then we've got this outlier that wants to kind of do their own thing that could have an effect on the neighboring cities. If there were no effect on that neighboring city, I would be more inclined to say, hey, Kattati, keep Kattati's interest. Rona Park, keep Rona Park's interest. But since we are in such close proximity and, you know, just right down the street from me here at Ladybug Park, it's annual. So I think it's incumbent upon us to say, look, you know, we love Rona Park, but we don't like fireworks. And that's kind of my opinion on that. I don't know if Chief Parris wanted to weigh on this and the safety concerns and the cost involved and the labor, et cetera.
I don't have any cost for you, Mayor, but it certainly is a safety issue. And then, for example, you know, we both share the L section. As you said, where you reside. And it's legal to use fireworks in the Rona Park L section that borders the Kattati L section. And it's very confusing for residents. And it's hard to enforce already. And so I would certainly support a yes on that referendum.
Thank you, Chief Parris. Okay, with this particular issue, I will open up for a public comment. Oh, we already did, or no? We did.
We did already open up for public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. I do see one attendee, but no heading up. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. If other people are not concerned about the political effect of putting out a statement, I'm certainly comfortable with it. I think, I mean, I haven't heard anybody opposed to, anybody who's not in favor of Measure D. And so it's just a strategic question at this point of how useful our voice is in that debate. And so as long as the letter or the statement is carefully constructed to make it about fire safety and about the unworkability of towns that are so intertwined having differing laws around fireworks and then, you know, all framed in the context of fire safety, then I'm certainly comfortable with us sending such a letter.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, I understand what Councilmember Ford is saying. I guess I feel that we are being supportive of the Rona Park City Council. I'd feel, I think, a little bit differently if we were imposing a difference of opinion with our other colleagues. But it is in fact the Rona Park City Council that put this policy in place. So I don't know if that helps or not with where you're at. But if we were going against them, I think I'd feel a little bit differently. But I think we're standing in support of what they have put forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, just one last check in from the mayor's perspective since, because you didn't comment this. Would you think of the idea of perhaps giving you authority to write this letter or have staff write this letter, but giving you also the leeway to check in with the Yes on D organization or campaign to confirm that they would welcome this or with the mayor, perhaps, your colleague, the other mayor in this region, and see if that is something they'd welcome? I can go either way. If that's something you don't feel the need for, I'm fine with just supporting the letter. But it struck me as it covered both bases because I would hate to do something if we haven't talked to them and find out that it was ill perceived or unwelcome. That's a fair consideration.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. In full disclosure, the Yes on D campaign did reach out to me. And I indicated that we would be bringing it up at a council meeting.
So I think that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thumbs up.
You're welcome. So with that in mind, I guess I would just need a consensus that we could draft something supporting the Yes on D campaign. I've got two yeses so far, three, four, and I'm in support of it. So there's five of us. So thank you all very much for that. And I'll get together with the city manager and draft a letter. And then I'll edit it and take out all the nice words from Damian, and we'll go from there. So that brings us to Item 11E on the regular agenda, the city manager agreement extension. And with this particular item, this is in reference to the contract with our city manager. And I have to read some information regarding that script. And I'm sure this came through based on the City of Bell several years ago. So the Brown Act requires the city to provide a verbal summary of a recommendation for an action on a local agency's executive's salary or compensation. Item 11E is the recommendation to approve an amended and restated employment agreement with the city manager. Basic terms of the proposed agreement are as follows. One, extend the city manager employment agreement by five years through July 8, 2026. Two, offering a competitive compensation package including a base salary of $94.11 per hour beginning on July 5, 2021, an annual cost of living adjustments of 2.5% beginning on July 1, 2022, and consistent with other city labor groups. And number three, making benefits consistent with the recent changes to the Kattati Employees Association to address constructive receipt to ensure compliance with IRS regulations. There are no other changes to that. So with that, I'm more than welcome to open it up. Mr. Obed, I don't know if you are interested in commenting on this or just want to sit back and enjoy.
I don't have a staff report, per se, but I just briefly, I will add that I just appreciate the council's support and I really enjoy working with every one of you. And I'm lucky enough to have a really good team of managers here at the city as well as staff. So I am very fortunate to be in the position I'm in. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think that your staff is a reflection of you. And I think, for the most part, they're doing a terrific job. So thank you. And with that, I'll bring it back to the council if there are any questions or clarifications on that. Okay, seeing none, I will open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And looking to our attendee tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raised hand icon. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. I will bring this back to the council for further discussion if there's any other questions. Council, Vice Mayor Lemon.
I'll just briefly say that a five-year extension is both indicative of our faith and the quality of work that the city manager has provided and can continue to provide, and also personally that I believe it will be a huge continued benefit for the city of Kattati. Simply put, this is a vote of confidence in the work you've done, Damian, and we look forward to seeing you do more of it. And as I often tell you, when things are very busy at City Hall, which they always seem to be, is you'll look very good with solid white hair. I think you'll totally be able to pull that off. So glad you're with us for five years. That's good for Kattati, and I'm hoping it will be very good for you as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Well, Vice Mayor Lemon said essentially what I wanted to say. So just thank you, City Manager Obed, for being willing to re-up with us.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sparks.
I don't have much new to add either, but just I appreciate how responsive you've been and as a couple of new council members have been coming on. And I'm really glad that we can lock in a five-year renewal. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey.
Ditto to all that has been said. Really appreciate working with you, Damian. And if you would like, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I would certainly entertain that, Councilmember Harvey.
I would like to move that we adopt a resolution approving the amended and restated agreement for the city manager.
I will second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
An enthusiastic yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Obed. Continued service. Thank you so much. Now, and speaking of continued service, now we're going to move on to the city manager's report, and it better be good.
Yeah, well, you know, my-
No pressure.
I know. I'm afraid I might not live up on this report. But you know, my wife does tell me when I have gray hair, she likes to listen to what I say a little bit more stuff. It's a pride benefit.
Yeah, don't blame it.
When you have white or gray hair, you have more wisdom, according to my wife. All right. So just an emergency update. As we all talked about earlier in this meeting, the FDA did approve the Pfizer vaccine this week on Monday. I think officially it was when it got approved. So that was good news. Also, I mentioned this before in a prior report, but we continue to have the mobile COVID testing site in Kattati at the parking ride, St. Joseph's Parking Ride by the freeway. And they will continue to be there weekly on Wednesdays from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And there's all out-of-pocket fee for the tests and more information is available on our website. So throughout through August 16, the city has reduced our snowmelt water demand by almost 34% below the same time period in 2020. This is a combination of municipal well heat as well as customer conservation. And as things stand now, it's looking like that 20% requirement will be at least for the foreseeable future, summer, fall, that's going to be in place. um for the foreseeable future, summer, fall, that's going to be in place. And um it will, it will no doubt, um, overshooting the target at this point will no doubt help us as we get into the winter and the um and you know, all the way to December, one of those state restrictions are still in place on the water agencies' deliveries, but our outdoor water usage will stop, of course, as we get into winter, at least hypothetically will stop if it starts raining. And um and then it gets a lot harder to get conservation at that point in the year. Uh, on the wayfinding project, the um uh we had a pre-construction meeting yesterday and um and we're now working through some middles and and uh fabrication that'll go through the end of October, with installations beginning in November extending into December. So um as we talked about in a prior council meeting, sort of in parallel with that, we're also working through um the sign edits, the interpretive sign edits, and we'll be back to council with that in the near future and hopefully um at the end of the process, it'll coincide with um the schedule and get installed with the kiosk. Worst case, the kiosks go in without the signs yet, while that's still being finished, but we hope to get it all done in a timely fashion. And so another city employee that's been with us for a long time that hates recognition, so um will will volunteer, will volunteer his recognition without his knowledge. So Al Martinoni, our public superintendent, he um he has his 35th work anniversary tomorrow with the city, so very impressive name, and um stops keeping it low-key because he prefers that nobody even mentions it. Of course, I mentioned it in the most public forum possible, so we'll just keep it between us. But it's a big uh, anyway, big anniversary date for one of our longest-term employees. And then um hot off the press, we are, we just set, actually just in fact today, set the date for a joint evacuation drill with Rona Park and SSU and would be putting out public information on this here shortly, but um September 15th at 5:00 PM is the date that was, that worked for all three agencies, and so we're um now moving towards that date and we're also going to be testing out the new high-low sirens that are on our police cruisers. Um, and we'll be putting out, of course, a lot of public information around that ahead of time so that hopefully people know it's only a drill and not a real evacuation exercise. I think the uh the tagline, the tagline chief is um, "When you hear the high-low, it's time to go."
Correct. When you hear the high-low, it's time to go.
Except this time, except this time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right, so next Wednesday, the 31st, we're having a new youth soccer program starting in partnership with Portuguese Football Academy, and um these are soccer fields, drills, and mini-games for ages two to five, and they're going to be um in Katari Park on Tuesday afternoons. We're also um, we're also working on a after-school enrichment program at the ranch. We talked a little bit about that tonight. We didn't get into a lot of detail, so um we're starting this fall, it's supposed to be intent, this is every weekday, offering art, farm, nature-based activities, homework help, and snacks for children ages five to nine. In partnership with uh our Faranda Flitty Ranch partners that we heard from tonight, and um there will be three, four, and five-day auctions for the, for the kids, um, and even an option to take the bus from S- uh from Thomas Page Academy to a drop-off right in front of the farm. So those are all the things that are kind of planning in the works and um just a little bit more detail on one of the things we kind of brushed over earlier tonight. Um, other fall offerings include a nature, a children's theater program, sorry, which include intro to drama, improv class, as well as a full production of Shrek the Musical Junior for kids age uh seven to 12, and Beauty and the Beast Junior for ages, for kids ages twelve to eighteen. Um, the farmer's market continues at La Plaza Park every Wednesday through the end of September, um, 4:30 to 7:30 PM. Um, and then also the Katari Accordion Festival is on the weekends, September 25th, 26th, in La Plaza Park, and more information on that can be found at katarifest.com. And um we do have another uh SOCO in the park coming up here at the end of August, so that's that market in the park run from Bow and Arrow, the woman that runs, Bow and Arrow runs this. So they've been very successful, so it's great to see that continue. Um, they're going to be pausing during September because of the accordion festival, but then they're going to resume, I think, one more in October, and then I think they're going to probably shut down for the winter, or maybe reformat into a different type of event through the, through the winter. So for more information on city programs and events or um any of these, any of these recreation programs I just spoke about, you can always contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222 or awilson@kataris.org, and of course, always our website and our social media pages have information about them as well. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Are there any questions for our city manager? Okay, seeing none, you're off the hook, Mr. Obed. With that, we will now move to our um city council member reports.
I think I reported, we reported this last time, but just a reminder, we're going to have a community conversation on our um ad hoc committee uh on September 18th, which is a Saturday, from 10 o'clock to 12 noon. It'll be outdoors in a tent.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey.
A couple of quick items. One, um, I attended the SIGMA meeting, and one of the important things to note um is that they sent out um 7,000-plus surveys, and they were a little disappointed because they only got a couple hundred back, and so they were thinking that that wasn't very good, and then as they looked at the data a little bit more, um, there were actually over 4,000 um looks at the map, and the instructions had said if you're happy with what's there, if you think it accurately represents your property, um, then you don't need to go further. So in, in reviewing that data, that, that is actually pretty good, uh, pretty good results. Um, they're continuing to work on the uh the plan and it, that schedule is very, very tight, but it looks like we will um start reviewing the plan pretty soon, and I know that there's, I forget the date, I don't have it with me, um, there's a community meeting to go over it. I want to say it's October 13th, but I'll report again before that. Um, I also attended the um Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and the important thing out of that is that um they've applied for a regional application for um beverage recycling. Um, they did not have um our city or Rona Park included as a, a place to do it um when they originally submitted it. They um have five places. They're struggling with that, and so they are going to be checking to see if that application cannot be um modified, but it looks like we have the possibility um of this pilot having five places um in Sonoma County, um, which is good because we haven't had any for a while. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Um, does not look like I have any other councilmember reports due today or coming up. Okay, thank you very much. Um, a couple of things that we did have, of course, we had our kids' day, very nice day, uh, went very well. We also had our mayors and councilmembers meeting on the 12th, which um went relatively smooth. Um, you know, not in control of that, but it went pretty well, and it was good presentations on, on homelessness and housing, things along those lines. Um, and then last but not least, we had a REMF meeting, and um we talked about the retiree medical, that REMF, or which is now CERA, as that merger has gone through. The retiree medical costs are not going up, they're staying flat, there's a slight increase for prescription drug coverage for the retiree medicals, but um retiree medical premium cost is a direct pass-through to those retirees, so there's not a cost to the city involved, they just get the benefit of the plan and the plan rates. So that's good to know on that one. And then we reviewed the financials on there, um, financials are looking good and where our investments are. There was a topic of um bringing up a little bit more um social responsibility, if we can, within the parameters set out by um municipalities and government agencies, on where we can and this, where we can't. We do have quite a few restrictions, which are good in some regards. Um, it doesn't allow us to have some of the freedoms nor some of the risk involved with bigger uh municipal investments like KALPERS, um, because KALPERS had a fantastic year last year, but we know that that doesn't always happen. I think they were somewhere in 21% return, which was unbelievable. But anyway, the, the CERA financials are looking really good. Um, and that's all I have to report on those, so things are looking good in that regard. Um, they, they haven't gotten the clearance yet to sell the old REMF building, or once they get the clearance from all the other municipalities that they're not interested in, then it can go on the market. So that might be something to just shore up their financials even more, so. That's it on that. So uh with that, I will now uh open it up for public comment on non-action agenda items, if there is any, Ms. Burgess.
Mayor Moore, thank you, and our attendee, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raised hand icon. And that will end the public comment.
Thank you very much. And information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will move into closed session, and it will be conference with city level negotiators, city designated representative city manager or designatee, and the employee organization Katari Employee Association, CEA. Um, do you have a separate link from that, Mr. Obed, or we?
I do, actually, I, I apologize, I just sent it probably five minutes ago, so it should be in your emails.
Okay, so we'll go into closed session and then we'll come back and report out. Thank you so much.